Okay, so with that said, um, the first item on our agenda is a scheduled hearing for a liquor license transfer. And Mark, if you could please read the public hearing notice.
Sure, uh, notice is given under chapter one thirty eight of the Mass General laws that Capiche Incorporated has applied for a transfer of an annual package store wine and malt beverage license currently held by BKP Incorporated located at one ten Southville Road, Southborough, Mass. Described as a two-story wooden structure, main entrance and exit on Southville Road, rear exit emergency only. Outside staircase to the office on second floor, storage and basement, street floor for sales. Proposed manager on record is Hitendra R Patel. A public hearing will be held by the select board acting as local licensing authority in the Thomas McCall of hearing room, second floor of the townhouse. Seventeen Common Street, Southborough, Mass, Tuesday, April twenty third, six thirty P M.
All right. If it pleased the board, my name is Arthur Pearlman. I represent Capiche Inc. It's going to do business or it's doing business already as Corderville Market located at one ten Southville Road in Southborough. Uh, Capiche Inc. is a mass corporation. Hitendra Patel is the sole officer, director and shareholder. Uh, and uh, Capiche is seeking that transfer, as you said, of the license currently held by BKP Inc. doing business as Fitzgerald General Store. Uh, published notice was accomplished by the town. Um, mailed notice to a butters is not required for a transfer of a license. This transfer of ownership from keep A B, which is owned, BKP is currently owned by A J. Who's here with me today and a partner. And it's being transferred to Capiche Inc., which is going to be A J hundred percent. Uh, BKP has a beer and wine license. The license was transferred to A J and his partner in two thousand and twenty. For the first two years of that, A J wanted to renovate the place and bring it up to date. The partner really didn't want to. That went on for a couple of years, a little over a year ago. A J finally made a deal with his partner that he would spend the time and the money renovate the whole place. At the end of the period when it was done, the partner could either pay for half of what he spent to do it. Or leave. They agreed that then he would just leave if they didn't. At the end of the time, he doesn't want to stay, so he's leaving. So now A J is going to be the sole owner. Uh, the building and store outside inside have been renovated. If you've been by there and seen it, it's been quite an outstanding job. The only thing left to do now is going to be the parking lot and landscaping, and that should be done this year. That'll be done this year, so that the whole outside will be completely redone also. Um, i- if you've been there, it, the look is outstanding. I was there the other day and it just blew my mind because I had seen it before. And I hadn't been there for quite a while and it was just outstanding. Uh, A J lives in thirteen Westcott Drive in Hopkinton. He will continue to be the manager on the liquor license. He already is the manager on the liquor license. He will continue to be. Uh, the current operating hours will be maintained. The layout of the store will be as per the floor plan that I submitted with our application. Uh, nothing regarding the operation uh, is going to change other than it's being completely renovated and upgraded. Uh, A J is familiar with the laws, having been in the business with chapter one thirty eight. Uh, he will continue to make sure those are obeyed. Uh, he's familiar with the town of Southborough too, with any rules and regulations you might have. He's already familiar with him. I would respectfully request that the board approve a transfer of the beer and wine liquor license from BKP to Capiche Inc. Thank you.
Right. I have a question, although it doesn't really concern the liquor license. It's just something you said. So the parking lot. Uh, you're kind of looking to pave the parking lot. Will this be like the dirt? Part of the parking lot where people are parking for the train station or? Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So just repaving the currently pace. Okay. I, I don't have any questions about the application. Do you?
No, but thank you for operating a business in Southborough. We, we love our small business owners. Your name is so familiar to me and I can't remember why, but it is. Um, so, um, good luck. So you're basically just buying your partner out. Alright, so no, I, I don't have any questions. I'm glad you're staying. So good luck.
I have a question. Um, I've not followed this closely, but if I recall, there were issues with reported health in this facility in the past. And also I think building part. Um, all of the, all of the health permits and building department permits term of today, no problems.
Yes, yes, everything's been done. That's one of the reasons why I felt he had to take over.
I had the same question about the building permits, whether they were, um, okay, so this is, you're giving me your word, the building permits are up to date.
Someone was by there today, I think, yesterday, tell you yesterday, and they, he showed them the building permit.
Alright.
You know, this, this seems quite routine and I think we ought to proceed expeditiously.
Okay, is there any public comment on this matter? Um, seeing none. I moved to the board to approve the transfer of the liquor license. Let's see if I get this right. Um, from B K P to Capiche Inc., is that right?
Capiche Inc.
Okay, all those in favor? Was it? Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Yes. No. Okay, alright. I've been there for a, um, what do you call it, uh, propane tank refills because I live close and I frequently am cooking like, uh, I find myself in that situation where I'm cooking a steak and then I run out of propane halfway through and then have to run to the.
Make one suggestion. I always keep one backup.
Well, I actually two had, do have two, but then I don't promptly refill them, so. So that's, that's probably why. Alright, thank you again. Okay, alright, thanks. Okay, um. The next item on the agenda is, um, Karen Bernhardt had put in an application to serve on a twenty-one Highland Future Use Committee. Um, and I know we reached out to her, but I don't know if there's anyone in the audience right now that, um, I don't know if anyone has been in touch with her?
No.
Okay. Alright. So I suggest we just continue the table list. And, um, so Tim from Pear Park.
Our, 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 our.
In practice, yeah.
Paray.
Uh, is here to speak to, um, recommendation regarding the lead testing of the former water tower site at Atwood.
Sure, yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, again, my name is Tim Thies. Uh, I'm an engineer with Par Corporation. Uh, we were asked a couple of months back, back in February to investigate the former Atwood Street Tank Site. To see if the, the former tank had impacted soil with lead, right? And I'm not sure how many of you guys remember the tank that used to be out there. Uh, I have some photos of it you could put up. It was a, uh, one hundred and fifty thousand gallon, what we call an elevated water storage tank. Uh, that is a picture of the top of it. We have the one, the sketch that looks like that. So the tank had been installed, had been constructed in the nineteen thirties, I think actually nineteen thirty, the tank went up. Uh, it was demolished in nineteen ninety-one, I think. The tank was torn down. Like I said, it was a hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank. It was about a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and fifteen feet tall on this site. Uh, behind you is a, a sketch of the, oh, was there, a sketch of the tank, what it looked like uh, when it was installed back in nineteen thirty. So that's the tank as installed in nineteen thirty. You can see it's got four steel legs, a center column. That column's actually a pipe that carries water into the tank up at the top and then brings it back down into the distribution system. Those four legs land on four concrete pads. You can see from those pads that they look like, it's not super descriptive, but they look like they sit just a little bit above the ground surface. You know, there's a little bit of those exposed and that's going to be important when I talk about the lead data that we collected. So this is what the, what the tank looked like. In nineteen ninety, when they tore this down, what they did is, and if you can go back to the photos. The way they tore this down, they actually cut out one of the legs. They removed a piece of that center pipe, that center stand pipe. And they literally just pulled it down to the ground. Alright, so this next one here, this is the tank lying on the ground. Okay. Now, like I said, this was a steel, a steel storage tank and like all steel storage tanks, it was painted, right? And we paint tanks to, uh, prevent them from rusting and corroding, right? It extends the life of the tank. But back in the nineteen thirties, the forties, the fifties, those tanks were painted with a lead-based paint. Okay, very, very common. Uh, what is also common on sites like this is when you have that lead-based paint, over time, the lead deterior, the, excuse me, the paint deteriorates, the coating fails and the lead paint starts to fall off the tank and it lands on the ground and it impacts the ground with lead, right? The soil, uh, at the surface, um, gets impacted with lead. And so we were asked back in February if we could go out there and do some very limited sampling to essentially answer the question. Has the soil on the site been impacted with lead? And so that's what we did back in February. And we wrote a, a letter, which I think everybody, uh, has been provided a copy. Uh, at the end of the letter, there's a site plan that shows the results of our sampling. So what we did is we, again, it was very high level, just essentially to answer the question, has it or has it not been impacted? And so we focused our sampling on the areas that we thought were most likely to have been impacted, specifically um, what we call the drip line of the tank. This is where as the rain comes down, what runs off the tank lands on the ground right around the tank, that's the drip line. Right? We also looked, we tried to find the spot on site where that tank landed when they brought it down, right? Because we think that that's probably, that probably shed a lot of paint when they brought that down. So we went out in the field and as best we could, we tried to identify the location where that, that tank actually landed. Uh, and we did samples. We did samples at the surface, because surface oil is usually uh, the most impacted, right? Because this is all surface deposited. It comes from the, from the, the wind and the rain bringing it down onto the ground. And then we go, uh, in layers below that to see what the vertical extent of lead impact is to the soil. And so when we went out there, there were actually no real visible, um, indicators, visible signs of the old tank, right? Except for there was a, um, part of the metal stand pipe, the, the pipe, the riser pipe that goes up to the tank. That had been capped right at grade, right? And somebody had been out there before us and they had uncovered it. Uh, and so we found that, that stand pipe. Uh, that riser pipe, I should say. We then set out to see if we could find where the feet of the tank had been to make sure that we were in the right spot. And what we found is that those concrete pads that, that I showed you in that first sketch were there, but we had to dig down to get them. Okay? And that's important because we expected those to be above grade and they weren't. They were about six to ten inches below grade. Which indicates to us that somebody had, after the tank was demoed, they had probably filled the site, right? They had brought in some fill uh, and covered up those pads, right? Which is important because again, we, we were looking for lead at the surface and if somebody had come in afterward and sort of buried part of the site, that lead would no longer be at the surface. It would be down some amount, right? A foot or more, maybe. And so like I said, what we did is we, we did samples at the surface and we did, did samples about six inches down. But at the tank site, we actually extended those samples even further down. We did samples at, uh, eight, at twelve inches and eighteen inches, right? So we went down eighteen to twenty-four inches with our last sample. So we went down about two feet. And what we found was the surface samples, the handful of surface samples that we collected on the site, we did find lead. Although the lead concentrations were not, not very high at the surface, okay? The magic number for lead on a site like this is two hundred parts per million or two hundred milligrams per kilogram. And almost all of our surface samples were below two hundred milligrams per kilogram, which is good. It means that we are below what would be considered a cleanup standard. But when we went deeper, particularly at the drip line of the tank, where we thought maybe it had been buried and we got down to twelve inches, eighteen inches, we found very high concentrations of lead. Over a thousand parts per million in a couple of our samples, which indicates that that area where we expected to find the lead, it sure enough, there was lead there, right? And it was, for the most part, where we expected it to be, once we realized that some fill had been brought in. Once we dug through that fill, we found it at the old surface. It did start to go down in concentration and the next sample that we, we sampled below that, it had started to go down, right? It went from, you know, a thousand parts per million to a little bit over nine hundred. In one sample, it was over seventeen hundred parts per million. Uh, the next sample down, it was at a hundred and sixty-eight. So we found it at the surface. We found it underneath the tank where we would expect it. It doesn't seem like it goes extremely deep under the tank, um, but there is cause here for, um, for us to, to further investigate the site, right? Uh, and I'll talk about next steps, but. So, but like I said, for the most part, surface samples were not, not that bad, above what we'd consider to be background, right? This, the lead that we found in the surface is probably not naturally occurring. It probably is from the tank. Um, but for the most part, all those surface samples were below the cleanup standard. We did two samples at the property line, at the southern property line, which is the property line closest to the tank. Uh, we did two samples there. Again, we did a sample right at the surface, zero to six inches. And we did another sample at six to twelve inches, right below that. Uh, all four samples that we collected, so the two samples at, at two different strata, all below the two hundred parts per million, so all below what would be considered the cleanup standard, which is good.
On the property line?
On the property, right on the town side of the property line, right? We didn't go on private property. We stayed on our side of, of the town side of the property line. So they were all below the cleanup standard, but again, probably not background, right? So for example, the two surface samples that we collected, one was at a hundred and forty-six parts per million and one was at a hundred and three parts per million, right? The samples below that, you know, one of them is down to nine parts per million, right? That's probably a background concentration, the nine parts per million. The hundred and three above it, probably not. That's probably, from some degree, that's probably from the tank, right? That we're seeing there. Again, not very high, but not background, not naturally occurring lead right there. So that's good. Why that's good, it means that all the surface samples that we've collected so far, below that cleanup standard, meaning that the exposure to lead on the site is probably, it seems at least right now that it's, it's very low, right? There's no lead at the surface that would be above what we considered a, um, a risk. But there is lead, at least under the tank, there's high concentrations of lead that should be investigated further. So before I go on to next steps, does anybody have a question about anything that we found out there?
Can you be clear on what property line you're talking about? So we've all been there, so we know what it means.
It's the property line of the south.
Okay, so we know where the Sturgis live, right? So their property line?
Yes, yes.
So, the next steps, what we would recommend is that this site be further investigated. Essentially, we answered the question, has the site been impacted? The answer is yes. But the next question is, to what degree? How far does this lead extend beyond the base of the tank? And how deep does it go, right? We don't think it goes very deep, but we don't, we don't know exactly the bottom, right? So the next step here is going to be to do further sampling on the site. Grid out the site, particularly underneath the tank. We're thinking a tight spacing under the tank, probably a ten foot by ten foot spacing for samples. Probably a hundred foot grid, right underneath the tank. And then work our way out from there at, at a less dense spacing, probably about a thirty foot spacing from there on out. Um, again, we, we know that they dropped the tank. We did a couple of samples in the field to try to, to try to capture that. We're not a hundred percent certain that we did capture that because we can't tell exactly from our sampling where that tank landed. Uh, but we think, you know, you do a thirty foot grid out here, we'll probably find it. And so we think that's the next step. Go out there, grid out the site, do further sampling here at more depths, uh, than what we've done so far. Did what we identify, what we call the nature and especially, how does, how far does it extend out horizontally? And how far does it extend out, um, vertically in the soil? And then from there, we'd work with the town to develop a remediation plan, a cleanup plan for the site based on whatever the future use of this site is going to be.
I have a question about the, the spread of the contamination here. Um, when they dropped the tank, clearly, you know, something that size hits the ground with a big bang and would knock paint chips loose probably. But is it likely, based on your experience with this kind of thing, that, uh, there is a substantial contamination from that versus the, uh, over the years? Paint flaking off of the tank around the drip, drip line there would seem to me to be the, the most significant concentration. But if, if the, uh, you know, the, the felling of the tank uh, generates, you know, huge clouds of paint chips or whatever, then we need to be more concerned about that, but I'd be surprised if that were the case.
So, so that's a very good question. We have not seen a lot of tanks taken down this way, right? You know, like, essentially like a tree, the woods taking down.
The unique Southborough EPW.
So we, we haven't seen a, a lot of tanks done exactly that way. Um, so we, we don't know what took so, we don't know if, if where that tank landed, if it did shed a lot of, a lot of, uh, paint. Um, but for sure, you know, being up in the ground, being up there for sixty years with the rain coming down on the wind, we would expect the highest concentration to be directly.
Right.
Um, and then this, you know, whatever was out in the field, it's probably just at the surface or just below the surface. And again, it's hard to say. We only have two data points out in the field. They were not very high. Um, it's possible we missed it, you know, while we're out there, we were guessing to some degree as to where this tank landed, but we might find more out there, but I would expect beneath the tank to be the hottest.
Okay, thanks.
Um, it was sandblasted and repainted, I think, wasn't it?
Uh, I was told that it was.
Would that distribute any lead?
So when we repaint a tank now, we, we, uh, enclose the tank, right? Um, with, um, scaffolding and shielding so that the tank doesn't, the paint doesn't blow everywhere. That was not always the case back then, right? Um, they were sandblasted without any scaffolding, without any shielding, and that could blow paint and paint chips around quite a bit.
Um, Al, you have a question?
Um, my understanding is this is not a unique problem, that this is common throughout the re, the country. And, um, and then I think the other question that we would have is whether, um, you know, you think it would be appropriate to, uh, extend the testing, uh, into the parcel to the south, the which is the, the, the neighbor that abuts the property.
So I, I think at some point that would be prudent. Um, I, I think what we should do first is get a better sense on the tank property. Where the, where the, the lead has, you know, what the extent of the lead is, what the distribution pattern is. And that will inform the sampling that we would do on the southern property.
So, so you'd be proposing sort of a, a two-step sampling pro, protocol?
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Um, Margaret, so you're, you're all set with questions or Sam?
Yep.
Okay. And so the estimate that you have in here of, um, eighty thousand dollars is just for the site investigation, but not for any subsequent remediation work because you, you want to find out the the distribution pattern on the site and that informs the next steps.
That, that's exactly correct. So this would be to investigate, uh, the site. Again, identify those limits, where it is, and then with that data, we would figure out, for example, how much soil has to come out of the site. Is it a hundred yards, is it a thousand yards, is it ten thousand yards? Like, we don't know that piece of it, right? So we've come up with that quantity based on the sampling. Uh, and then understand not just quantity, but how dirty is that soil in terms of disposal, right? Some, some of the soil could be, depending on the concentration, some of it could be very expensive to get rid of it. Some of it could go to an online landfill in Massachusetts at a relatively inexpensive cost. We won't know that.
And there's, there's no, uh, deadlines under the D E P for how quickly that needs to be remediated or?
That's a good question. So, uh, the, the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, uh, which is what governs all cleanups in Massachusetts, all site cleanups in Massachusetts, has a carve-out for sites that are contaminated with lead-based paint. Uh, that was applied, that this was the, the, uh, site of original application. Meaning because this lead paint was painted on this tank at this site, it is exempt from reporting to the D E P and is exempt from the timelines that are, uh, in the M C P. It still has to be cleaned up and it has to be cleaned up in accordance with the M C P, meaning we have to hit the concentrations in soil that they require. Um, you know, we have to ma- manage the risk, um, that this lead would present. But in terms of the timelines and the M C P and reporting, there is an exemption for this site.
Okay. Um, anyone have any other questions?
So Mr. Kundev has seen this proposal?
Uh, I sent him a proposal, yes, for the, for the follow-up.
He's on vacation right now, so has, has he actually seen this?
I don't know if he has. I, I got his auto about, his out of office reply when I sent him.
Okay, so.
I believe he has.
I, so we think he's okay with this? We don't know. Um. So did we wait till he comes back? Did we prove it to, based on?
I think we ought to get some feedback from him.
Yeah, yeah.
Different views of it. Yeah, in, in terms of, of where you're going to search next, it looks to me like from the photos that the, the location of the felled tank is reasonably clear. Um, you know, maybe not down to the nearest six inches, but, uh, there not, aren't many places on the site that can go and be consistent with that picture. So within, you know, twenty feet or so, you ought to be able to come pretty close to.
That's what we think. We think if we do what, like, like I said, a thirty foot spacing.
Yeah, go out that way and, and, uh,
Exactly.
And clearly, it'd be interesting if you find concentrations at where the top of it should be, et cetera, that be confirmed, so.
Okay. And again, because this, this doesn't affect drinking water in, in any way, right? Because.
No, my understanding is everybody in this area is on public water.
Yeah, okay.
And they're, you know, so we did, we did have high concentrations of what we call leachable lead in some of the samples, meaning the amount of lead that could leach out of the sample was, was very high. Uh, but again, uh, that dissipated with depth. Uh, and again, like, my understanding is everybody here is on, on public water.
When did John Bowlen retire? I mean, I know he was superintendent in eighty-nine, ninety. Um, when did he retire? Two thousand two? So he, he may, he may know exactly, he may know, um, some of these.
I think it's amazingly helpful that there's a photograph.
Oh, yeah.
No, landmarks changed a little bit. We looked at these demolition photos and we tried to line it up as best we could to try to figure out exactly where it landed, but you know, like I said, trees are bigger than they were thirty years ago. You know, things aren't quite the same.
Actually, you can sort of see the road on the photos that goes up there, so that road, I don't think has changed in thirty years, probably, so.
So Tim, is this a fixed price? So there's no contingencies here as far as the initial investigation?
So we were going to propose to do this on a, on a time and materials basis because we think that the number of samples that we have in here, we could probably reduce as we go through the site.
So this is an estimate to eighty?
Okay, not to exceed.
We could do it as a not to exceed.
Okay, any other questions here? Yes? Okay, can you identify yourself? Oh, yeah, you're just gonna like.
I'm Carl. That'll be the idea about that property. Uh, when they, when the tank was taken down, was it on the ground for a long time before they actually moved it or like, because it fell to the ground? So it could have been there a while.
You know, that I don't, I don't know exactly the timeline.
Okay, maybe.
They prop, my guess is that they probably cut it up on site, which is very common, right? You cut the steel up on site and take it out. So my guess is it was on the ground for a little while anyway, as they cut it off.
Okay, and one thing there should be, so Mr. Alvadi is the, a butter to the north. Yeah. Right? Okay, so then that's a little bit up, uphill, right? So I would think that it, it looks like from where it landed, it's kind of in the middle or a little bit to the s- So I, I would think that there would be less of a.
I think, I think I'm far away from it. I, it's the way the picture looks. I just know what it looks like. It looks like it fell to the Sturgeon's property.
When did you buy your property?
I moved there in two thousand and sixteen, May.
Okay.
But John Bowlen might be an interesting person to touch base with. On the process.
Maybe get Bill to call him and talk to him and then report back.
Just one more question. I know this doesn't fall under the timeline, um, that is a special exception. If it fell under the timeline, what would the timeline be? Meaning like, it has a special exception. I don't know why, but it does. But it's, assuming it didn't, when, when would this all need to have, have happened? How quickly?
So I don't want to misstate the time, the, the exact time, because every project in the M C P has a little bit different, but generally they require notification within, a site like this, they would require notification within about three months, a hundred and twenty days. And then you would have, I think, another hundred and twenty days after that to do further investigation. And then depending on what you find, you can set in that timeline out if you need to do more investigation, if you need to clean it up. And then depending on what you find, you can set that timeline out if you need to do more investigation, if you need to clean it up. But generally, they look to get these things taken care of. And I, when I say taken care of, I mean buttoned up, remediated, you know, within, you know, a couple of years.
Why is there a special exception to this?
Uh, because there are so many sites in Massachusetts and across the country where lead paint is used, right, that the, a lot of states do this. They don't want to be, um, they don't want to be an obstruction. They don't want red tape to be an obstruction from getting these sites cleaned up. Right? So if every homeowner had to report to the D E P that they had lead paint on something, right? None of these sites would ever get cleaned up. Right? So they they have this exemption in there to essentially encourage people to clean up sites that have, that were impacted based on lead.
Make it easier to get it cleaned up.
Make it easier, exactly. So they don't get stymied by a lot of.
More likely.
Didn't we know about the dangers of lead paint by ninety-one?
Uh, we did.
Certainly.
But again, this would probably wasn't painted in ninety-one. This was probably painted in the seventies.
Yeah, but you would have thought maybe they'd be more careful taking it down, but whatever.
Just as an editor and just as a, um, just somebody that's a little concerned about this, I would just um, kind of stress that even though it falls under the exception where it doesn't have to happen so quickly, I would like to, and I think other people in the neighborhood like to see it happen quicker than just with no timeline at all, so. Do you have, do you have a timeline on when you think this, how quickly all this would move?
Well, if if I can jump in here, I mean, I think that the next step was we, after the D P W superintendent comes back, you know, at the next meeting, we can get some feedback, what he thinks of this proposal. And then another thing that we're going to talk about a little bit later is, uh, ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. Yeah, so there's a pocket, there's a bucket of money that's basically provided by the federal government that has to be spent by X date. So and some of the money that we anticipated for spending for other things is coming back. So there's, there might be an opportunity where it could be done without having to wait to go to town meeting. So I guess I would, my response to that would be, you know, the select board has to discuss it, but prob, you know, I hear you on that and and would probably be looking to get a, get, you know, Bill's kind of feedback on the proposal by next, by May seventh.
So later on, um, in this meeting, we've got a agenda item for ARPA funding topics, and we're going to talk about this. So we'll have the funding ready to go. So I don't think you should, um, think that just because we don't have a deadline, we're not going to.
No, I'm not thinking. I just wondered if you had. Okay, thanks.
So if I could, um, ask a question on top of that, would it be possible to test the butters sooner, like as soon as possible? Rather than doing it as a second phase?
I think we should follow Ms. Tim's advice as far as how to do it. You start here, then you go out. Um, we're we're going to get to them.
No, I'm I'm not like trying to be an expert. I just think there's anxiety in that.
I I can imagine there was. And like I said, what I'm, what I was pleased to see is that the samples that we found at the property line, right? If this spreads out radially from the tank, as it got to the property line, at least the surface samples were below the the cleanup standard. So two hundred parts per million uh, below that, they consider that to be no significant risk.
Okay, and is that at twelve inches and below?
This was right at the surface. We found it, that it was below two hundred. So that's where people would be interacting with the soil right at the surface. And we found it, it was there, those two spots, it was below two hundred. That doesn't mean that we do more samples, we might not find something, but at least those two samples didn't come back streaming hot.
Okay, so let's try to give the, um, Sturgeon's a little comfort here. So, um, let's assume that next meeting, um, so Bill's looked at it, he's fine, we approve it, we've got the funding. How long will it take you to get to the point that you'll know whether you should go further?
Uh, the only hangup for us in terms of timeline is getting the equipment out there. So we were, we're going to use what's called a GeoProbe, which is a piece of equipment we don't own. We hire somebody to come and use that. They are about four to six weeks out in terms of scheduling, and then we've got probably a couple of weeks of lab time that we have to get in there. So you know, once we got the notice to proceed, it might be eight to ten weeks before we have all of our data back.
Okay.
Veda's.
Okay. Hello?
Hello, this is Bruce Sturgeon for the, uh, south side of Butter. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, we were hoping that, um, that our property would be sampled at the same time. I was just wondering what would be the increase in in cost for a few samples done on our property? And would that be possible to include?
It's certainly possible. Yeah. You know, the cost for sampling, if we're if we're getting the samples while we're out there, they're, you know, analytical data is only thirty, forty dollars a sample, so it's not overly expensive.
And does that vary based on how deep you go or anything like that, or?
No.
Okay.
Again, I just, I want to be cautious if we, if we go out and we sample on the neighbor's property before we fully understand what's on our property. Uh, we may miss evidence indicators of where we should be sampling on the neighbor's property, right? It might, the data might come back and clearly point us in a particular direction, and if we go out there, bring it sure that we might miss that. It's not to say we can't go back, just we might miss that first time.
So we basically might waste some effort if you do it without the right targeting there, basically.
So maybe you and Bill talk about this, knowing what the Sturgeon's have asked for, and, um, see what you think and, um, come back to us.
All right. Okay, so, um, we will take this up again on May seventh. That's the plan. Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so next on the agenda is, uh, our other Tim.
Evening. Um, so I'm here tonight, um, Agonklin Baseball Softball Association, our partners in town for youth baseball and softball, are looking to continue to improve upon the site at Trotier School. Um, last season, they brought, um, the softball field, which is beyond the track, back up to playing condition. And now they're looking to further that by adding a batting cage as well as a storage shed behind the current backstop. The softball numbers in town are climbing rapidly, so they're just looking to outfit that field appropriately to give the best, uh, conditions possible for those athletes. So because it's on town land, uh, select board needs to give the final approval. Uh, but rec commission was in favor, conservation has cleared it, uh, the permits are with the building department. Public Works is okay with this, school's okay with it. You guys are my final staff.
Okay. Doesn't cost us anything.
Nope.
All right. No questions.
Who who was the abstention on rec commission?
Uh, we had someone abst.
Is there anyone that you've heard from who is opposed to this?
No.
I can't believe I would be, but that's amazing. There's always somebody who has a problem with anything.
I got.
I'm okay.
All right. Do you know whether the baseball association will also handle any upkeep or maintenance of the?
They will. Yeah. And the, um, the style of the cage, it's netting, so in the, uh, inclement weather months, they'll be taken down.
That's.
So it's not damaged.
Okay.
It'll be taken care of.
All right, well.
Can we make approval of this contingent on your staying with us?
Well, that was a good, that's a good segue.
A try, Sam.
This, this is something that really, this could have been, uh, on the consent agenda probably, but I thought another reason why I was glad to see. Um, and Tim here is, um, as I think everyone on the board knows, um, so Tim is going to be leaving us unfortunately to take, uh, uh, a new job as the recreation director in the town of Brookline, which is where you began your rec career. So, um, I'm kind of, you're going to need to help me with the exact date when you started. It would have been, you've been with us since two thousand and.
Nineteen.
Okay. I think you have really taken, uh, the rec department, you know, into kind of the next era forward, which is great. And so, um, you know, it's going to be tough shoes to fill. So, um, certainly on that, you know, for myself, and I'm sure everyone else will say the same thing. I just want to express our appreciation for your I guess that would be, uh, five, five years of outstanding service to the town. I thought in particular, you know, we benefited from the fact that you were good at some of the, you know, operational day-to-day stuff and, you know, running the camp and all that, but also, um, you know, anytime there was a question at town meeting about why are we spending this? Why are we spending that? Can we get some grant money for this? You're always very well prepared. And, um, so, you know, we wish you the best of luck.
I'd also add that I I appreciate the new approach to managing the playing fields. I think the the concept of, uh, sort of managing the overall asset there and having fields that are rested periodically to keep them, uh, longer term in good playable condition i- is horribly logical and amazing that we have managed to not do that so much in the past. But wonderful to actually get that on track, to be able to have a sustainable asset there without the substantial cost of having to rebuild everything. So that, for me, has been a huge step forward, and I appreciate your
Big ball from day one.
Push on. So thank you. Thank you.
So I can remember when Tim came to one of our meetings and said, guess what? All those projects that I inherited that were in, you know, different stages and troubled, like calendar filled, et cetera, they're all done. Um, you you remember you came, you did, you showed us how what calendar field looked like at that point, so that was pretty miraculous. So now I, uh, you know, I called you, I told you what I think about, um, the job you've done, and I will say it publicly too. So you will be missed for sure, but I am very happy for you. I know that Brookline is, um, a much bigger place, so this is a, um, um, step up for you. So, um, just leave your wife here, please. So are we going to vote on the, um, cage officially?
Yeah, we can't forget about that. Okay, I moved the board. Approve the construction of the, uh, batting cage.
Second.
All those in favor, I, I as opposed. All right, so we got that. So we didn't forget about that. Marguerite, Al, you have any other?
Let's just, thank you very much for all you've done for the town. Our our losses, Brookline's, uh, gain.
And I hope your new job is wonderful.
And and I know that you recently passed on to us the news of Patricia Richardson's passing, and I know that she I remember this just because when I was in the Z B A, we we, uh, handled some of the hearings for the lighting, right, at the Richardson tennis court. But is there anything you'd like to say about her?
It was, it was great that she was still with us in person playing tennis last fall. And I think all of us in the department who are willing and or able to be there in person will just remember that. And, um, you know, her playing with the kids of the high school as well as Trotier those days in the fall, even when it was very difficult for her. I know how much it meant to the kids. I know how much it meant to the staff. So, um, I think we're all just very fortunate that we had that time with her. And we're happy to always have her name on those courts for generations of players.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I know on behalf of our board, we ex- express our condolences to her family. Well, we we have the batting cage approved. That'll be, uh, you know, the last, I guess, official act that we have before you, but I really, I hopefully stay in touch.
Absolutely.
And you put in a good word so that we, uh, end up getting, uh, a very high caliber or ca- high caliber replacement who can I'm sure you pick up the baton from you.
So Tim, can I ask a practical question? When when's your last day?
Uh, next Friday.
It's Friday. So, um, I know you've got a very capable, um, second person, um, but do you think that we're okay as far as the summer camp, um, given?
Yes.
We're not going to have you replaced for 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 a little bit.
Yeah, and I and I've said it before to multiple people, this is the most confident I felt going into the summer. We are way ahead of schedule and at many different levels. So as long as we get our staff solidified, which should be by the end of this week, we're pretty much planned out. Um, so we're, we're pretty solid through August. So I think we should be just fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so, um, from from here, before we, um, I don't intend to go through the agenda here necessarily strictly in order here. I know that, um, there's been a lot of interest in the North Borough Road sixty-one A parcel discussion. Um, and also we wanted to maybe quickly hear from Jay, um, on P O if.
He went.
He went?
He left.
Okay, all right.
You're good.
Strike that. Okay, no one any questions, don't have to worry about that. And I I believe Shop C posted a meeting for seven P M, I think. I don't see, I didn't see that any of the other boards posted any, um, meetings. I think that's it. Okay. Um, so does that make sense to people? We just take that in order so that if there's anyone, anyone else from other boards and committees that, um, we can take care of that, and then we'll. All right. So as everyone will recall, um, town received a notice under um, sixty-one A from the Johnson Trust of their intent to sell two parcels to a solar panel company. And that triggered the town, um, if that is a bona fide offer, then the town has a right of first refusal to match it for a hundred and twenty days from that the date that it was sent. So a hundred and twenty days, even taking, even though it looks like it was sent on February first or second, take January twenty-ninth, the date that I have been writing down is May twenty-eighth. Today's April twenty-third. So I think that the reason why, and just strike that, one, just backing up a little bit. At our last meeting, we talked about it. It didn't look like there was much appetite from this board to match the price. But we believed it would be beneficial to get some input from the C P C, Open Space Preservation Committee and Shop C. And now each of those three committees has now come back and said they support exercising the right of first refusal. This is all um, we have sent the Johnson Trust a notice notifying them that the offer or the notice that we received was not a bona fide offer, so it doesn't trigger the one hundred and twenty days, but just I think it's worth having the discussion about, assuming for the sake of argument that it was a bona fide offer, in which case you would have to respond within a hundred and twenty days to avoid losing the opportunity to match the right of first refusal. If we were to exercise, then we would need to, as I read the statute, you need to send the the notice that which would you you would send a purchase and sale, a proposed purchase and sale agreement under which the town would meet it and and that would need to be prepared to meet that within ninety days of sending that. So basically meaning that I believe that would then need to be approved by town meeting. Okay. Because involves acquisition of real estate. So that puts you in August. All right, so that's a relatively fast timeline if that's going to to happen. So, um, I think that at this point, um, we should hear from um, folks from C P C and Open Space Preservation Commission. And I don't know if there's any, is there anyone from Shop C here? Okay. You know what they're, what what you are thinking? And I think the one big question that I had, I think other members of the board had is, you know, how do you come up with the money, right? If if you're going to buy all, I believe it's nineteen.
Almost twenty acres now.
Yeah, so that's.
About five million, five billion bucks.
How how do you come up with that money? And and one thing we put in the packet was just some information about the current balances in the, um, Portable Housing Trust Fund. And I believe C P C Community Housing Money, which has not yet been transferred. That's, uh, I believe the combination of those numbers was around a million dollars, maybe a little less.
About a million, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, can I just interject here before we start talking to 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 our guest here? Um, I I just think this is, um, so premature. We know what Posibelli has said, which is, there's no deal here. There's nothing to match. I mean, that's not there's just no deal here. So, um, there, we really didn't have to respond, probably shouldn't have. And the letter we sent was, as he pointed out, incorrect, that two parcels are considered one because of the road in between and what the law says. So I just don't know why we are going to spend a lot of time talking about something that's not even a deal. And cost, you know, five million dollars when, you know, we were, we're. and cost, you know, five million dollars when, you know, we were, we're doing anything we can to figure out how to pay for, for things that are much less in cost. So, I mean, I'm happy to listen, but I just think it is not a productive use of our time.
Okay, um, Freddie? I know we, we just received a letter from you.
Yes, and I apologize for the lateness of that, um, extenuating circumstances I have.
Six twenty-eight.
No way, no one's seen it. No one's seen it.
Yeah, it just came out.
It's fine.
I'll be short.
I printed out coffee.
Send it down here.
I'm gonna read it so everyone knows.
Need one more here. Thanks. Thanks.
Hi, um, I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And, um, the letter states, Dear Select Board, the Open Space Preservation Commission determined at our March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four meeting to support the pursuit of the town's right of first refusal on the Johnsons' family, chapter sixty-one A parcels on North Borough Road for the purpose of open space. Both parcels on the assessor's map seventy-one lot six and one A are listed as a high priority for protection in Southborough's open space and recreation plan. We discussed funding resources and other open space needs in the town. We determined that the best use for this land would be a combination of open space and community housing. We are aware that the lack of affordable housing leaves much of our undeveloped, unprotected, open space in jeopardy of housing development under forty V. If the town were to vote, the town were to devote resources to friendly forty Bs using CPA funding, this would alleviate pressure on other town properties that are unsuitable for development. I just want to add in, this isn't in the letter, but we had the discussion because, want to be clear why we're talking about housing when we're the Open Space Commission and we feel it's related and we always look at best use of land for the town's needs in addition to our specified preservation of open space. So this became reasonable to discuss doing a joint project. Back to the letter. Additionally, we are aware that a joint community housing and open space project could utilize CPA funding in an amount of almost half of the required match for the purchase of both properties. Based on this, the commission authorized me to reach out to Shop C and share our desire to collaborate on a joint proposal. I attended the Shop C meeting on March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, where we discussed the concept of a joint project and funding using CPA monies. Shop C members agreed with this project concept and to go over the proposal and funding with the Community Preservation Committee. We attended the CPC meeting on April fourth, two thousand twenty-four to discuss the proposal and CPA funding capacity. The CPC voted unanimously to support using CPA funds to enable the town to purchase the parcels. The Open Space Preservation Commission urges the Select Board to take all necessary steps to exercise the town's right of first refusal and we looks forward to conversations on how to move forward. On behalf of the Open Space Preservation Commission, thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Freddie Gillespie, Chair, Open Space Preservation Commission. And I would just like to add a few tidbits to that. I know the CPC sent an email or a letter supporting this. We did not agree on a dollar amount, but I will say using CPA funds, we're more money than, um, just, first of all, we did not discuss using any money that is currently held in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee's accounts because for the Open Space Commission, we felt that is another committee's funding, not appropriate for us to, you know, make suggestions how they should use it. But certainly if that amount of money was added to what we could also come up with in existing CPA monies, it would more than meet, um, what we thought was half of the price. Because, um, using affordable, um, housing money and open space, which has some money in their bucket as well in the CPA accounts, it opens up more bonding capacity. Currently, we are looking at being, um, I shouldn't say we are, sorry. Currently, the Community Preservation Act monies are kind of tapped out for bonding because we have three large projects, the restoration of this building, um, the library and eighty-four Main Street, roughly a million dollars each. And it doesn't leave a lot of extra money that you can bond against. However, that doesn't count the ten percent set aside for both housing and open space, which can be used towards a bond with the leftover excess, um, capacity, which ups the bonding amount, plus with the, those monies and some other funds still left in CPA accounts. So that's not a discussion until you have a project on, you know, how much and exactly the CPC's not, doesn't, they don't talk about money without a proposal. It would really need the Select Board's input to be appropriate conversation to, um, move forward with a proposal. But we really felt that this is a really grand opportunity. Cause one thing about open space, I heard you say it's a lot of money. It is. But they're not making any more open space. You know, we don't have that much left for what is non-developed available priority land for protection. That's not slated for development in some other way already. Is it worth the price? Well, when you look back on what something cost twenty years ago that was really too high priced to purchase, we would, we would do anything if we had gone back and been able to purchase those properties now. So I would say that the open space component combined with a very real benefit of doing what the CPC, when I was Chair, started for twenty years talking about what the best use of affordable housing projects and mass housing and the coalition all agree. Buying land and creating your own friendly forty B, working with a nonprofit developer gives you the most leverage from your taxpayer dollar, because they could, these nonprofit builders can, um, leverage tax money somehow. It takes a little bit of time. But other towns are putting, you know, giving land and putting in short money and getting twenty units, something significant. And then they manage it afterwards. So our housing authority doesn't have to have it. And I'm speaking outside of the, I should have taken off my Open Space Commission hat and just said, as a citizen who was a founding member of the Community Preservation Committee in this town, I believe that this is a unique opportunity to pursue for housing and then to have the benefit of preserving um, historic landscape and open space. It makes it a win-win. So I understand you feel there's not a need to move forward now. I would hope that you would become confident that the clock hasn't started ticking and to move forward with a plan. If it has, what do we need to do to exercise it in ninety days after you send that um, letter to exercise the right, which is the end of May, I believe? So to be prepared to do that and be prepared to have conversations with the, um, committees and citizens in this town who feel we should move forward on this. I'm not saying you're going to agree, but let's have more conversations and not necessarily at the last minute when we have to decide. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Hi, Lisa Barashio, thirteen Oregon Road. Um, I am not speaking. I'm taking all my hats off. I'm just gonna speak as Lisa Barashio.
You got a lot of hats, Lisa.
I do have a lot of hats these days. Some of them are prettier than others. But, um, I think just, just a couple of points I wanted to make for you to consider. Um, this is, as Freddie said, a very unique opportunity. At this point, Kathy, I appreciate you saying that, you know, there, there's time to make a decision. Andrew, thank you for moving this forward. Um, the, the conversation forward, sorry. So at this point, we don't even know. There might be a community housing organization out there that might be interested in even partnering with us and coming forward with us ponying up some of the money to purchase this and some not. I think there's a lot of due diligence that can get done. What we're looking at here potentially is an investment in affordable housing. This board specifically has done a lot of talk over the last year through your goal-setting meetings about creating affordable housing. This isn't, this is an opportunity to create meaningful affordable housing. Not maybe one unit, two units, three units, or even four units for the million dollars that we have. This is looking at a much bigger picture of the opportunity of thirty-plus units. Not just at an eighty percent AMI, but partnering with the community housing organization, that number can go down to fifty percent or below. At a fifty percent or below, you're actually looking to provide housing potentially for teachers, firefighters, the elderly people that, that are being priced out of their home for taxes. A wide variety of people that a fifty percent AMI or lower would allow for. And I think it's very fiscally responsible to look at what you could get for your money. Another thing I want to stress is, you know, we're looking at a hundred million dollars for a school. This town is willing to make that investment in a school. I think we all need to stop talking about it, as Mr. Hamilton has said many times, and actually do something. And we don't get opportunities for sixty-one A properties to come on the market very often. While I sat on this board, we had many conversations with Papaso Farms in the opportunity that that may have presented or come forward. And we let the family know that the town was interested. I think it's, it's time to quit talking about it and at least do due diligence and consider this. Don't say no tonight, you know, take the time that we have. And I think that we can't afford, to say we can't afford, you know, thirty, fifty units potentially um, for four million dollars, four and a half million dollars. I think that's something that taxpayers should decide. There is a lot of want in this town for affordable housing and there's a lot of need in this town, you know, um, going back to the fifty percent AMI for a second, you know? That would give a someone, single mom, working her butt off, two jobs, the opportunity to give her children every chance to have a good education. Oh, it's a wonderful town to live in. We talk about equity, diversity and equity in this town. This presents that opportunity on a much larger scale than one, two, three or four units may do. You get a bigger bang for your buck for this. All I would ask is that you take the time, don't make any decisions tonight. The clock is ticking. Continue the conversation because I think it's an important one. And I think it's one that this town, through many online conversations and, and conversations I've had with people, of, people are looking for some form of affordable housing in this town. Eighty percent is, is still unattainable for even some of your teachers. You know, you're looking at having to make a base of roughly a hundred thousand dollars, which again is, we want to provide equity. We want to allow those that are so deserving that really want what's best for their families an opportunity to have that in Southborough. Um, and I don't, I'm not saying this board doesn't think that because I believe you all do. Everybody here talking about this wants what's best for the town and wants to do some meaningful, really truly meaningful affordable housing. So I would just ask that you continue these discussions. There's a lot of groups that are interested in it and allow these conversations to continue to take place. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Desmond, five Pine Cove Lane, member of Shop C. And, uh, I don't have a whole lot to add to that. I thought that was very eloquent, what, uh, Lisa and Freddie both said. But, you know, I do agree, this is a unique opportunity. So I'm the third one to call this unique. And it just doesn't come along very often, especially a project like this that can address both open space and affordable housing. So I, I think we have to give this serious consideration. Um, Ms. Cook, to your point that, you know, we have time. I think that's great. I mean, we can use that time to get our ducks in a row here and really come up with a, a solution. You know, it was only a few months ago I was sitting here to, uh, get your approval to get appointed to Shop C. I think all of you expressed, you know, serious interest in affordable housing. And this is an opportunity to really address that, as Lisa said, you know, on, on a scale that we haven't seen. I don't know, since I've been in town for like twenty years, as far as I know. And, uh, somebody used the word investment and I, I would echo that because we're gonna be getting property taxes from these units. I mean, if we get twenty units that, you know, say sixteen dollars per thousand, which our rate is somewhere around there, say they're worth four hundred K each. I mean, over twenty years, that's two and a half million dollars. So looking at it that way, this is an investment. So I hope we'll take the time to seriously consider this and, uh, come up with some creative ways to, to get it done. Thank you.
I, I have a question about, you know, your, the references to specific number of units and how is that? Because all this is, is just acquiring land.
Yeah, that was a total guess. I'll totally admit that.
And Andrew, I'll add to that. When, um, Shop C and Open Space met, Tom Bischoff had said that most community affording groups, you know, are looking to do thirty-plus units. And I think, again, looking at nineteen acres, I, I think that, that there's a way potentially to do that. So it's just, again, I can't say what a community, community housing partner might do or might not do, but it seems to me that with twenty acres or even half of that ten acres, you could do a fairly good number and a fairly nice project.
Okay.
Al, is that the microphone?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, Al Hamilton, thirty-five Pine Hill Road. As you know, I'm, have to recuse myself from, um, uh, in an official capacity. I'm not going to talk about the merits of the particular property as, uh, I'm related to in a butter. I'm going to, want to talk about the financing scheme that has been discussed where we would take all of the money that effectively we've received from CPC, including the monies in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then we would also commit the monies that we would receive for community housing for the next twenty years or so to bond, which by the way, would generate, uh, at current interest rates, about seven hundred thousand dollars. To do so without a concrete plan to build housing, which includes identifying a specific developer and a specific development proposal is irresponsible in my mind. What we'd be doing is committing all of our affordable housing funds without actually having a plan to build a single stick of housing. And that is what we have been doing for the last fifteen years, which is what animated me to run in the first place. I think we need to be realistic about the quantity of housing that you can actually produce for a million dollars. And the answer is, it is not that much, even with substantial leverage. So if we want to commit our funds for the next twenty years through a bonding process, we absolutely, in my mind, need to have a clear and unambiguous plan for how we're going to produce housing, which includes identifying a developer, developing, identifying a parcel of land and developing what is going and identifying what is going to be developed. What we can't do is what we've been doing in the past, which is having grand plans and talking about some community developer coming in someday, maybe, sort of. We've done doing that in the past. We, to use a baseball analogy, we've been talking for fifteen years about hitting a grand slam and we've never actually stood up to the plate. I see nothing personally wrong with hitting singles and doubles, which is what I think we have the resources to do. But if we are going to commit twenty years' worth of affordable housing money, we need to have a very clear, very specific plan.
Andrew?
Yes.
Can I make a comment here too? I have great respect for our previous speakers, all of them, as a matter of fact. I'm, I've thought about this and I've listened to a lot of conversations about, uh, a variety of projects over the last years in terms of how to leverage our money. And I think sort of the high level ga- goals that people talk about are all very, uh, laudable. But I have a hard time seeing a specific deal here that makes sense for the town financially over the period of time. And I, I'm not ready to, to pull the trigger one way or the other tonight necessarily. But what I would look for is somebody to come back to us with a specific proposal with all of the, the financials and other, uh, aspects of, of the project and a, and a developer who's willing to play with a particular deal, to look at something specific for a yes or no kind of decision. And I think that we've found in the past, that's a real problem to find people like that. People talk about there are folks out there who do these kind of things and I'm certainly aware of that. But what I think we need is, is at least one of those folks out there to come in and say, okay, here's a deal. Um, I'm willing to put up X dollars or X in kind or whatever kind of resources I have. And here's what the town would need to contribute in terms of either money or land or whatever. I also have some concerns about the location, um, uh, housing next to a railroad track and. Housing next to a railroad track and interstate highway, to me, is not what I think of as, you know, prime residential living, as a matter of fact. And I think that we could get in trouble in some ways with that. We talked at one point about having a deal with the Johnson Trust here to say, can you carve out a few acres and sell that to the town? And I don't know if anybody's pursued that or if there's any feedback on that one. But that kind of thing is far more interesting to me as a project that's smaller scale, that we could also maybe leverage into, you know, more than one or two units. And I think more likely get interest from a third-party developer to participate in something like that. So I guess I'm a long way for, from being comfortable with this at this point, under the current circumstances. But I'm certainly wanting to continue to listen and I realize the clock may or may not be ticking. It's not clear what the seller thinks about that at this point. But, and Andrew, a question for you on it. I mean, if we remain silent, the seller disagrees with us, then they presumably take us to court and say, you've, you've passed the response period, so you're basically passed on the.
This is just an educated guess. I would think that they wouldn't need to do anything. There would be.
We would have to go to court if they did something with the property, saying, wait a minute, you didn't comply?
Yeah, yeah, that's, this is again, you know, I've won J's.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just think there are a lot more questions than answers at this point and.
There are.
I need a lot more information to be able to.
So Mr. Johnson, he has told Paul Sabelli, he's got the, our letter with his attorney. So we expect to hear back from him sometime soon. Mr. Johnson has recognized that there is a very big problem with being able to build a solar farm on that property. He understands, he was on the Board of Assessors for a long time, so he's not naive about these things. So I'm not going to repeat what Al said or what Sam said, but I agree with both of you a hundred percent. But my issue is a couple of things. I really do think the focus in this town should be affordable housing and not open space. I think we've got a lot of good open space. There's never enough, right? But we know we don't have enough affordable housing. That's just a fact and that is where I think our focus should be. Andrew Faff and I came to CPC in the, with the previous committee where, when Andrew Mills was chair. And it was a straw vote, but every single member was supportive of trying to pursue an increase in the surtax. So we come back next year with a, with the current members and no one seems to be interested. So it seems to me that if you really want to do things like this, you've got to understand that we really can't not commit all of our CPA money to one project and cannibalize everything else. There's too many other things that need to be done. So if you really want to pursue something like this, I would think you'd want to consider increasing the surtax to, so we've got more money to do other things. That's a whole nother subject, but it just doesn't seem to be consistent with trying to do this. Then, again, I'm not, I really am not interested in the open space aspect of this. I'm much more interested in the affordable housing potential project. But it's not a good place to do that. There's many other places. So what's keeping us from trying to find another place where we can try to build something that makes more sense? We're going to have to pay fair market value for this land, two hundred something thousand dollars an acre. So I just, I don't see why you'd want to put it there, why that's a good place for that. Yes, maybe it's in the open space plan, but not affordable housing. So I just don't think the affordable housing makes sense there. And I certainly don't think the open space makes there as far as using that kind of money and using all of our CPA money for a long, long time for that one project, when we really need to focus on affordable houses. I'm on the floor, you know, we're serious about this. We just gotta figure out a way and we're going to talk about restructuring, you know, like we did when you were on the board, to try to find a way to truly get the right people to figure out how to do this. So we definitely want to get it done. Mr. Hamilton is not joking when he says he ran for Southport because of this. So I still think the focus should be that and not necessarily today, open space. I'm sorry, Freddie.
And just one, one point I'll make. You know, I remember when I, I served only one year on Shopsey, but one of the things that was completed, you know, shortly after I joined was a five-year strategic plan for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So this report was already, I believe it was from two thousand twenty-two. So we're already, the, the bottom line recommendation from that, as I understood it, was the path of kind of the singles and doubles kind of route, right? It's far more achievable. This is a. I just don't think we have the current structure set up to act quickly in evaluating and really, you know, locating a community housing developer for, for something like this. And I mean, I remember a quick takeaway I had from when I attended the Mass Municipal Association meeting in January, I attended a working group, you know, a panel discussion about, so this was about conversion of historic, existing properties to affordable housing. And I thought the key takeaway, what, you know, there's a critical mass of units needed to, to be eligible for federal tax credits. And that's what gets people interested in. But I am not familiar with anything which is just developing raw land. You know, it's an extremely challenging. It's difficult to see how anything like that would come together in.
And extremely risky.
Yes. So, yes, Freddie?
Thank you. I'm hearing a lot of good input on what you need to hear coming back. More definite planning, if, you know, it's. It wasn't clear if you were going to vote tonight or not. So if you're willing to, at the minimum, it's May, the end of May, where you, if the clock is ticking, that you have to respond. That gives about a month to come up with some more information. The Open Space Commission working with Shopsey maybe. I will say that working with the Community Preservation Coalition and having two presentations from the Circuit Rider, Shelley Goring, I think it's from Chappa. This type of project is always recommended. Raw land, you know, you work with the community builders and towns. I believe it's Chatham and other communities. Brewster, get significant amount of units by donating the land and working with them. Sometimes there's some money asked, but you're right, you need more information, what kind of money, which developer. But I don't believe you can go out and say, we're going to have this, this particular developer or community builder work with us. I believe it may be something that needs to go out to bid or you have to put a project together that I can't go out and ask someone to come in and say that this is who we're going to use. But maybe we can do more research and I can work with Shopsey on that. But I would disagree on the need for open space because this town has always, in all of their plans, said they want to preserve open space. And, you know, we don't have a very good track record. Chestnut Hill Farm in two thousand and six was the first project this town had done in thirty years.
So Freddie, let me just interrupt you. I'm not saying we don't need open space. I'm just saying we need affordable housing much more than open space. We've got a lot of nice open space. We've got a town now that really is unaffordable to a vast majority of people. So I still think that, so, you know, you can't do everything, right? So if you, if you got to prioritize things, I still think the affordable housing's got to come first at this point in time.
Which is why the Open Space Commission went, didn't say, just save it all for open space. We went to Shopsey, came up with doing it jointly. And also because using CPA funding, you can't get there with just open space or just affordable housing. And I'm, you know, I've been involved with the Community Preservation Act before we even passed it in town. And I've been paying attention. There haven't been any projects since we did two houses back in the early two thousands. This is an opportunity. There's never been anyone reaching out to put forth a project to the Community Preservation Committee to purchase land to do one of these projects. Here's an opportunity. Why this parcel? Because it's for sale. How many times have people gone to other? I know the Open Space Commission had reached out for other properties that aren't for sale. And, you know, the thing we've learned is you just can't buy land that's not for sale or that already is under contract or that already has a plan with a, an option. So this is an opportunity. The location is where it is. It does make sense on many levels, but we could talk about that if the other parts of it made more sense. But I think there's value in doing the open space. The reason thirty-five units came up was from someone at Shopsey, I believe, who said that was sort of the minimum that these builders were looking for and that there was plenty of land there to do that and do the open space. So this isn't me wanting open space and getting the affordable housing as a way to it. I'm a firm believer that this town needs more affordable housing, believe me. And I also agree with what Lisa said. It's not just, all we're getting is the eighty percent median income. That is, I believe, ninety-five thousand dollars for a single person's earning. There's a lot of people in this town that don't make anywhere near that, that are going to be needing housing because they can't afford to stay in their own home. And secondly, I think we should just, I heard what you said, look into it deeper. You know, answer those questions. But it's, it's not a no-win proposal if we can come up with more answers to what you were asking for. So thank you on that.
So if I could, I'd just have a couple of questions.
For Freddie? Okay.
So at present, I'm, I'm sort of not in favor of moving forward because I think it would, my questions were, is it going to tie up a lot of money in one project that may or may not come to fruition? Don't have to answer now. I mean, that's just it. How much of it is buildable? How much of it is wet? How much of it will perk? How much of it is ledge? I looked at it and it looks, it looks like a place that would be very noisy to live or even to walk on. And it, because it has the highway and the acoustics aren't terribly good and it has the high tension wires. So I, so I guess my issue would be, would it be livable, affordable housing or would it just be affordable? That's just a question you don't have to answer. Okay? And then the other, the other part of it is, I think. Well, I'll just leave you with those two. Would it tie up money so that if another project came along, we couldn't act on it?
So the answer to that is, yes, it would. Every time you purchase something using CPA money, you tie up money. And we've purchased a lot lately that are still being paid off. Remember, when we purchased the conservation restriction for Chestnut Hill Farm, we tied up our bonding capacity for eleven years. We could not purchase another open space parcel. That was a decision the town made. We used all of our money on that for the surcharge. So it's not like it hasn't been done before and it's not like we didn't continue to do projects afterwards. Secondly, I know there's an urge, not an urge, a desire to raise the surcharge to three percent. And if you know me, when we were doing the ballot question to pass it, I wanted three percent. And the other people on the committee thought it was unlikely to pass at three percent. So I caved in, plus I didn't have the majority vote, but, and we went with the one percent. So I don't, there's many reasons to go for three percent. But if, and I'm not on the CPC at this time, so I will say that as a citizen, I know from my past history that you need something to make people want to raise it to three percent. And here's an opportunity to say, yes, we're using all the funding here and to get more ability to do these other projects that are needed in the town. Raise it to three percent. One of the reasons I heard at the CPC meetings from some members that they didn't want the three percent because what are we going to spend it on? You have to have a project that people can dig their teeth into. And what if this is that project? Open space and needed affordable housing. And then just one last comment on the need for the one and two units at eighty percent median income. You know, we're going to be, it's not done yet, but we are going to be feeling. We are going to have development happen because of the MBTA community zoning that's coming our way. No matter how it phases out, it's coming our way. And the plan for that is ten percent of those units will be at affordable at the, and I guarantee it's going to be at the eighty percent median income. This town really needs to be looking at doing something for a little bit, you know, sixty percent, seventy percent. And just loading up on eighty percent is not going to satisfy the housing needs this town has.
So I'd like to, Lisa, if you want to offer another comment and then I'd like to try to just move to the next related topic, which I put on the agenda.
No, I, I appreciate that, Andrew, and I know you guys have a big agenda in front of you. So I just wanted to say a couple of things quickly. One, I really appreciate the conversation we've had here tonight. We may not be on the same page, but we're talking about it. And that there's nothing more that I could ask for than that, to keep the door open, to be able to continue the discussions. I will say, Marguerite, as far as the quality of living, of somebody living next to four ninety-five, I live less than a quarter of a mile from the Mass Pike. And you know what? It wasn't a factor when I bought my home. We were just thrilled to be able to be in Southborough. And that's a neighborhood over there already. And there are people that live, you know, closer to four ninety-five than these houses might be. So I don't think that's a deterrent. I think, again, you have to look at it as an opportunity. While I appreciate your opinion on that, and again, everybody feels differently. And I respect that, but just to give you another viewpoint on that. But again, I, one last point I will make, and this kind of ties into the discussion that we're going to have about reorganizing. Typically in a town, in most towns, the Affordable Housing Trust would be leading the charge on this, one way or the other, and bringing something to the Board of Selectmen. So for the future discussion, I think this kind of plays into why it needs to be done. But again, thank you for your time and thank you for your discussion on this.
All right, I think that's a good segue.
Just let me ask from.
So Lisa, your point is that because of their saying?
Is that your point? Is that? Basically, the Affordable House Trust is the same as select board, other than two members? Is that your point?
Yeah, but it just.
I mean, I agree with you, but is that what you said?
Basically, I mean, it makes it tough.
For ourselves, we're talking to ourselves.
It makes it tough. You should be looking at a proposal, Kathy. You guys should be looking at and deciding, you know, doing your due diligence. And you're in a tough spot because, I'll leave it at that. You're just in a really tough spot and it ties into the next discussion.
That's why we get the big bucks.
Okay. But I don't think we're taking any action on the North Borough Road sixty-one eight. Okay. Okay.
Good evening, sorry, I got in late. I'm just wondering which agenda item this is. Is this item seven yet?
What are, are you here for a specific agenda item?
Yes, I'm looking for item seven. I got in late and I had my hand raised in anticipation and you guys just called on me.
What's that one? Public comment.
Public comment.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not, that's going to be.
My apologies, I'll go ahead and mute myself. Thank you so much, God bless.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I anticipate that we wouldn't be, we have some kind of breakthrough tonight on this. But I thought that it would be useful to, I think one area we probably do agree is that the structure that we currently have, where there's at least three separate boards that all touch on the same topic, like an exact situation like this, which is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, seven-person committee comprised of five select board members, one Shopsey representative, and then one at-large member?
Large, yeah.
Two citizens at large? Okay, okay. But right now, one of the at-large members is the Shopsey member. There's the Southborough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee, which I look back at the bylaw, the description of the charge of this committee is like one sentence, to study and make recommendations. And then there's the Community Preservation Committee, which has specifics, defines statutory role and anything involving CPA funds and making sure that all the regulatory requirements are that. I think that probably makes sense that of these three, it can be put down to two. And that would streamline the decision-making structure. And another quick takeaway I had from the Mass Municipal Association meeting that I went to, walking down the halls and they had a, you know, booth talking to someone from the Mass Housing Partnership, talking about our structure and, you know, the woman I spoke to, it's not a great structure. And in part because select board members have many, many, many other responsibilities, you know, to have a restructured, and I don't know, probably be the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, that had a different composition and appointing people that have real experience in this area. I think there could be real value.
And a little broader charge. You'd have to broaden it too much, but you put the money and the expertise together there and following Ms. Brashow's. And following Ms. Brashow's suggestion as she was departing from the select board, I was looking around at other towns and there's.
We're not going to let her forget.
Some great, great models. It's all Lisa's fault.
She said Westboro, you said Lexington.
Yeah, and you look at those and essentially they have committees made up of people based on expertise, people with financing expertise for housing, construction, development, legal, et cetera. And you've got the resources there that can actually find opportunities and then evaluate opportunities based on real expertise that all of us together, Mr. Hamilton probably has more than the rest of us, but we're not the right group to do that process, I don't think. So restructuring seems to me to make a lot of sense. And basically take Shopsey and Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, combine into one, update the charge a little bit, you don't have to update it too much. And I think you had a structure that could actually make things happen there, which I think makes a lot of sense.
Al?
I've given this some thought as well and I think that two committees makes more sense than three. And those committees should probably not be heavily populated by members of this board, only because I've noticed that we have a lot of hats to wear. I think it's going to require some, some changes to probably the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, given that that is a, has substantial powers with respect to actually producing housing and purchasing land, for those that don't know. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund can in fact purchase property without going through town meeting, which is a big advantage in a situation like one we were just discussing. And has 16 enumerated powers that are granted to it by the state. So we would have to amend that. I think the one thing I would advise is that the actual disbursements of monies should be approved by the select board. You know, given that we are talking about substantial sums of money, that there ought to be some oversight and control. But beyond that, you know, I think combining them and it makes a lot of sense.
And this is on the kind of chicken scratch list of all-time meeting items that at least I've been working on. And it seems something that is achievable to maybe put together a little working group of, not, not a committee, just, you know, an informal working group of a couple of different people that work on a proposal that makes sense. Does that make sense?
Can I add to that, Andrew?
Yeah.
So I had a discussion with Andrew last week. My intention was to bring a citizen's petition to town meeting to have this happen. Obviously, it would make more sense to, you know, be able to have a working group sit down. I would suggest if that takes place, that obviously I would want to be included in that, a select board member and a Shopsey member, because those are the most affected. I think it's a needed change and I think it creates a great opportunity. And Sam, I will look over the Lexington model. I hadn't done that. I've spent quite a bit of time going over Westboro and a few other towns. I think there's great potential here and I think that there's great potential to have a group that focuses this. I mean, I sat on the select board. I know how many hats you wear and I know how busy everybody is. And this is something that truly needs somebody dedicated to doing it.
It's not just that. It's, you know, we, just because we're on support doesn't mean we've got any particular talent in this kind of area. I've got a client who's been in commercial states his whole life. He's just leaving and he's still got so much energy. So he has truly partnered with a person and this is all he does is, is affordable housing in the state of Massachusetts. He's in Brookline and used to sit on the Brookline House, whatever. So they really know this stuff backwards and forwards. I just lap it up when they start talking. Al knows a lot. I don't want to minimize that with all he's done with Habitat, et cetera. But just because we're on the support doesn't mean we've got any specific expertise to do this. So I just want to see people who really understand how to do this, staff that committee. And then, you know, if Al suggested bringing it back to select board to just approve it, as far as the money goes, it sounds fine. But you know, the Affordable House Trust, this is a trust. We keep saying fund, it's a trust. It's governed by a trust indenture. I don't know what you've got to do to amend that, whether it really is a town meeting thing. It's a Jay Tullman question, I think. I'm not sure you do. I don't think you do. So this might be something we could do fairly quickly and fairly effectively.
I also think, and this is not trying to make it too complicated, another thing that would be even better is in addition to putting together with the restructuring that you're talking about, having, again, I remember looking at the Community Preservation Coalition website and there's some kind of template proposal that you can use for how CPCs and Affordable Housing Trust Funds communicate about use of the community housing money, right?
That should be part of this, how we get the money moved over quickly and so we can use it, you know, when something comes up and you don't have to wait till.
There's no reason not to have that conversation.
Well, and again, I don't want to speak for CPC because that is totally separate from the trust and Shopsey. So I'm, I'm a member of CPC, so I'm not going to voice an opinion on that. But I think there are discussions that really need to happen. And like I said, my intent was to bring something forward to the fall. So happy to work with anybody to get it done or I'm happy to do it on my own. I feel really strongly about this and I think there's great opportunity here, you know, to get the right people. But I think it's also important to have a couple of citizens at large because sometimes, and I've had, this happened many times in my own life, sometimes somebody thinks outside the box a little differently than somebody that's on a straight line of business. So I think there's great value in that, as well as, you know, it's taxpayer money through, potentially through CPC. So I think it's.
We got aside the details tonight.
Right, but I'm just saying.
But it sounds like we've got a pretty good.
But in effect though, I mean, if we base appointments on expertise, I mean, those individuals are also citizens, so they're citizens at large.
Potentially they are, Sam, but I think you're.
Talking about external people.
Covering all, you know, but there may be somebody that doesn't meet the three or four categories that you're looking for. That's all. I just think we need to be open-minded in putting together a charge. That's all. And again, I'd be happy to, happy to be involved.
Thank you.
All right. I think that concludes our, we've said about as much as we can say about this topic. Is that right?
I think the direction is pretty clear though.
Yeah, maybe the next meeting figure out who's going to be.
Yes.
Group, not the committee.
All right. So with that said, I'll move on to the reports. Chair's report, this is going to be a quick one. On the Friday before April vacation, Al and I had a very pleasant meeting that was organized by Leah Emerson of the, our EDC coordinator with a eighth grade class at Trotter, which as part of their civics class, they have a project which is focused on economic development. And they have a proposal that they want to bring forward about organizing a business fair, which would be kind of similar like a heritage day, except it would be focused on spotlighting local businesses. And so you can expect to hear more about that soon. They're not thinking about doing it until 2025. It's like a long-term project. Hopefully it's something we can support. Al, anything I can add to that?
No, it was, you know, it was a small group, but an excellent discussion.
All right. And then, so I guess. Marguerite, you have the next members' report?
Yes, I do. And I would like to, if I could, include Kelly O'Brien and also Mimi Lutrell in this discussion, because it's really an update for the rest of the board, if I could.
Okay. I mean, we usually don't for just numbers report, yeah.
All right, then I will just wing it on my own and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong. There, this has to do with using Civic Plus to report issues. And Civic Plus has the capacity for a resident, if they want to, to go in and say, there's a pothole, there's a highway problem, there's la, da, da, da. All right, we're not using that at this point. What this really is part of is a larger issue of bylaw reinforcement. What I would propose, and this is only very in the early stages, all right, is that our website be reconfigured to use the Civic Plus capability. And there actually, as Northborough, if you look at Northborough's, and could you put Northborough's up? Northborough's website, which is Civic Plus also, has about 20 different ways to contact a different board, committee, whatever it is. Right on their homepage, report an issue is way on the right. Lisa, if you do a dropdown here, Vanessa, could you drop that down? You just click it on the screen. Thank you so much. Okay.
So that looks like it's not the homepage, but the DPW page.
No, this is, when you go to the homepage, which is the one, which is the one back, report an issue is right on the top of it. If you click this one, it's all DPW, all right? If you go to the, the Board of Health, they have another dropdown. And the third bucket is the building and planning, all right? They have a dropdown too. And it is, you will see consistently on all of those, those three areas, there's almost no problem you can think of that is not thought of. What you do is you say what your problem is and then you fill in your name, questions, blah, blah, blah. And you basically start an electronic trail, all right? So, so the DPW stuff doesn't touch the Board of Health and building doesn't touch DPW or any of the others. But basically if a resident calls up and says, my neighbor is, I don't know what, building something that goes out into the street, all right? It's a paper trail that's, that has a follow-up. And Kelly has been working previously in Medway with, with building department compliance there. Where if something like that happens, a letter goes out, correct me if I'm wrong, to the person who, who put in the complaint or the report, saying we are looking into it. Then a letter also goes out to the person who the complaint deals with. And then later on, there's a follow-up letter and then there's a follow-up letter on that. So that basically instead of, for instance, I got an email this week that there were trees threatening the stones in the old burial ground. It didn't go to the DPW. It didn't go to anywhere else. It went to me, a select board, and to Kevin Miller on historical. So I have to figure out where that goes. And then this is like not an efficient way to do it. There's no official trail of what's going on.
Marguerite, that's like a great idea. Have you talked to Jay Montehill to see if we truly have this module?
Yes, we do.
You've talked to him?
Yes, I have. And also Hassan actually has done this before because he worked for the Highway Department in Pawtucket. And he was the one who fielded. So he knows how this works. So I am just, our website, if you look at Northborough someday when you have nothing to do, except you want to look at Northborough's website, you will see they literally have 20 different report and issue forms on their website that are easy to access. So I'm thinking we're talking about this more and I still have to talk to Bill Kondif because he's away on vacation and see if he wants the DPW to have this at all. But I think building would like it. And I think planning would like it, definitely, because it's the beginning of saying, we want to enforce a bylaw which you are violating. Right? So now the problem mainly that we're having is we've got these good bylaws, but no enforcement. There's no trail, there's no anything. So this is the beginning of maybe solving that longish discussion, but I think it would work really well. And I don't want to impose anything on any department or group that doesn't want it. But I, I think it will make a big difference in saving time and enforcing bylaws.
So, go ahead, Sam.
I, I, one benefit too is it gives us a way to track some of this stuff in terms of what's going through the organization. I guess I, I see this as less of a members' report than a topic.
Yeah, I agree.
So, but I think that there's, it is valuable to sort of think about the process flow for these comments or, or follow-ups that citizens want to do. And there may be other structures than the dropdowns that Northborough had, for example. I think you got to have mechanisms for information coming in directly to various departments in addition to a central place and somehow coordinate some of that. But I think it's a very valuable thing if we could put something together like this. And I think it's more than just a few dropdowns in the website, but with a lot more conversation. And maybe, maybe the process is to have someone, Marguerite, come up with, with a specific plan that.
Sit down with Jay, sit down with MTC.
Participants and then come back to the select board and say, here is the process that we're proposing and we can talk about it, bless it or whatever.
I think that makes sense.
So the Westborough, the Northborough Board of Health has been doing this for one year. It was implemented a year ago. The building has been doing it for two years and the DPW for at least five. So I would, you know, we could use their.
The question is, has it been working?
Yes.
They've just been doing it for 20 years.
Anyway, so I just thought it would be a nice thing to take advantage of this capability.
Good idea, but the devil's in the detail. I think there's a, a good way to make it work, so.
Okay.
Good.
All right, Al?
Yeah, let's see, I think I've got two. The first one is regional dispatch. I sent a questionnaire out to roughly 10 regional communication centers in the greater Boston area, trying to answer the question of what our long-term cost structures would look like. And the question I'm trying to answer is, if there's no state support for your regional dispatch center, what do your costs look like versus the costs that we have today in our existing system? And the answer, I got five back. Three of them were relatively small districts, Neshoba, Air and Webster, which are kind of on the same scale as the, as the Westborough proposed one is. And the answer appears to be that the cost structure, if you look at it on a per capita basis, is very similar to what we have today with one dispatcher. The difference being that, there are two principal differences. One of which is that you have three deep coverage typically rather than one. If you look at the cost structure that we would have with plus two or plus four dispatchers, we become vastly more expensive than a regional, than the smaller regional districts.
Say that again, you compared two to Neshoba or one to Neshoba? Our current situation?
Our current, our current, I, I compare it for the three iterations. So if you looked at today, which is one, costs are roughly equal, you know, they're, they're not at quite apples to apples, but it's reasonably close.
Including capital?
Pardon? This was just operating. The capital is, is a bit murkier because right now the, the regional dispatch centers are all being completely funded from capital with, from the state. But I was, was able to get reasonably good operational numbers. That doesn't include the operations that also are heavily subsidized at the moment. But I think we have to plan for, just like the CPA, you know, the state will eventually decide we're on our own. But so for a small regional dispatch center, costs are roughly the same as our existing structure and highly favorable versus plus two or plus four. Then as you, there's only one, I'm not going to call it a large dispatch center because we don't have any large dispatch centers in the state, which was Holbrook, which serves 140,000 people. Their cost structure was significantly better than ours with one and they had 12 deep coverage. So the other sort of interesting thing is, is everybody seems, the other question I ask is, on your busiest shift, how many dispatchers and/or supervisors, people who are ready to answer the phone right away, do you have? And the answer for all of these places was about one in 10,000, one for every 10,000 in population, which is what our population is. We're 10,450. So it's, it was, was, was pretty interesting. The call volumes in the dispatch centers are, hot, call volumes per dispatcher are higher than they are here. We're a quiet little town. You know, and, and actually that's kind of the, the other thing that, that jumped out at me. We're a small town and, you know, whether we like to think about ourselves that way or not, but we, we are. So we continue to press forward on, and then the other item that I've been working on, I met with the fire department. As we talk about putting in the new water tower someday in the future, in my past life, I In my past life, I ran a wireless company, and there's no substitute for altitude when you come to antennas. And so I did a quick and dirty path study of what would happen if we put a public safety antenna on top of the water tower. And it turns out, it would solve a myriad of, of dead spots that we have. We have dead spots at the, or, or Communications, at the train station, along south, the, the eastern part of Southville Road, and of course, our neighborhood in Pine Hill Road. And it appears to me that putting a public safety antenna on top of the water tower would greatly improve communication in all three of those areas. I met with the Fire Department, and with Dana, and who is very knowledgeable, we're lucky to have him. And we're going to continue to discuss that. One of the things I think we discussed was, if we have to go for a variance for the water tower, we should include in the variance a public safety antenna.
We definitely have to go through various, that's a fact. We've got to do two, we've got to have a neighborhood meetings, which is what we promised at the beginning, to show them what the tank is. Remember, this is in Andrew Faft's backyard. And show them what it's going to look like, so they really understand what it is. And then if we're going to try to put this on top of, that should be part of the discussion. So I know Mr. Tees is, trying to incorporate that, right? As he continues. Chief Achilles had originally said, don't do that. And I texted him tonight and said, why? He said, oh, it's, his reason was, just get the Regional Dispatch decision made first before you start planning our communication, so then you know what to do. He said, he said he's all for it too. But, um, we got to make sure the neighborhood is, is, you know, if it's going to add more height, because this new tower is really much taller than what we have right now.
Understood, yeah.
We just have to be careful with our...
We, we need to bring in a, a sample antenna, they're, they're pretty, they're
Can't see.
Three, four feet tall, and they're about that big around.
That's, that's a great idea.
Yeah. So, in any event, this is something I'm working on.
Thank you.
I've got some too.
You've got some too?
I can do it quick.
Sure.
So, I just got two things. One is, Andrew and I had office hours on the ninth, and we actually had a lot of people come, and we were, we were busy though, and we were there an extra fifteen minutes talking. So we had some good, I, we really appreciate Leah Emerson, she, she's really got some great ideas. So she came to talk, Claire was here to talk about what we might do with the one-stop grants. And then, we, we, we had a constituent that showed up, which happened to be my husband. And I thought, well, he's just coming because he can't see me.
Plaining.
Well, no. I thought truly, he did because he didn't see me during taxes, and he just come to watch what we're doing. Oh, no, he definitely had a complaint, which is Pine Hill Road. So I said, noted, noted, noted. So, yes, it definitely has problems and needs to be fixed. But more importantly, update on the NEARIE project. So, here's where you are tonight. There are twelve options that the architects are going to evaluate by May twenty-first. May twenty-first, they're going to send the, what they think about the twelve to the MSBA. MSBA is just going to say, fine, you did what we asked you to do. They asked us to evaluate twelve, you want our money, you got to look at all twelve. So, that goes in. Then, from May twenty-first to August twenty-first, the NEARIE Build, Building Committee, along with the architects and the OPM, will be working really hard over the summer to evaluate those twelve options, and then, in August, vote on which one we recommend. That, that recommendation goes to the MSBA. They, they generally don't veto it, so they, they usually accept what you, you have come up with, they assume you've done all your work, you've got a reason for doing it, goes in. And I bring this up for a reason. When you went to the forum last week, you may recall, there was a person there who said, I don't want to make, I don't want to judge this, I don't want to express my opinion, I want to wait to see what you come up with, and then I'll tell you what I think about it. Well, it's too late at that point. When we get to August, we're down to one, and that's what's going in. Now, town meeting can vote it down, but at that point, we spend all this time, so I'm trying to say tonight to the public, if you need, if you want to get involved, now's the time to get involved. There's going to be another forum coming up that's going to be hybrid. There were some complaints about the last two not being hybrid. So, now's the time to get involved, because we really are, this train is truly moving fast at this point. And August, we will have voted on which of those twelve options we think should go forward to town meeting. And then they'll spend the next eight months actually putting the schematics together to be able to provide a better cost when we get to April. And then the last thing is, the website is up and running for the project, and it is NEARIE, NEARIE School dot com, I think, let me make sure I got this right, excuse me, NEARIE Building dot com. So that's where everything is, that's where all the communications is, we have a Communication Subcommittee that is posting things, it's really nice. So if you want to stay up to date with it, just write that down and take a look at it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I think that, okay, Town Administrator's report. Moving to the consent agenda, are there any holds?
A.
F. A, of course.
A, F.
And the last one, which is K.
Okay.
You got to hold B and talk to Mr. Hinton.
Okay.
Since he's here.
He's here.
Sure.
We should. We were just gonna...
Okay. A, B, F, and K?
A, B, F, and K.
Okay, I moved that the Board approved Consent Agenda Items C, D, E, G, H, I, and J.
Second.
All those in favor? Those post. Okay, so if we're just first to B. Steve, thank you for volunteering for this position. I, when we were putting on this the agenda, I didn't know that this is even...
Me neither.
Select Board-appointed position or anything, but we're happy to, thank you for your, yeah. I, I didn't, so we're not even clear if we need to do this or anything, but I, do you have anything you want to say, or, other than, yeah, sorry?
So I've been doing this job for three years.
Okay.
Oh.
You know, Isabella is the one who was, had the position of doing it.
Okay.
You know, the last three years, road it to in the garden, laying out all the stakes, making sure everything's cleaned up. So, you know, the, the position is nothing new. I didn't know that I had to get into being a town official. I'm not, they're town email.
All right, okay.
I, I think we're going to have to swear you in, and I want you to swear on a tomato.
Mm.
So you know what you're doing, as far as what this is, okay, good.
I think I do.
All right.
I moved that we appoint Steve Hinterneider as the Community Yard Coordinator to a term that expires June thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sam, you had some edits to the minutes?
Yeah, on the April fourth, line fifteen, there's an extra word, moved. I need to strike that.
I'm sorry.
April fourth, line fifteen. Moved is extra.
On the fourth, fifteenth, okay, I'm not seeing it, but I'll, oh, okay.
April fourth.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
Okay. Typo, and that's it. Nothing on the second.
Any other edits? I moved that the Board approved the open session meeting minutes for April second and for April fourth as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? Kathy, you held H, I'm sorry, F.
Which is the proposed contract for the Public Safety Staffing Study. So, Mark, I'm going to look at you, I just want to make sure that, I think these, and Andrew Faft wants this too, he, he's waiting, I was impressed what should be in here.
All right, okay, start again. So the proposed staffing study from MRI, right? So, I'm fine with what's here, but I think we need to be specific about three things that we want to make sure come out of this. Number one, we want to know whether they recommend a deputy fire chief, right?
Yeah.
Two, we want to know what they think the local dispatch structure should look like if we stay local. And specifically deal with Chief Newell's tour request beyond the four dispatchers, the lieutenant and the patrol officer that was going to specialize in court stuff. You know, I, I, obviously, they're going to sit down with Chief Newell and go over this, but I just want to make sure that they do specifically address what, the two things that he asked for, so that we can get an answer.
Yep.
Right?
Those are my...
No, yeah, absolutely, we'll make sure that, you know, when we sit down, kicked us off and everything, that they understand, you know, these things, you know, exactly what we're looking for.
The timeline works as far as being ready for...
It does.
So if we get going, we can get this done.
So you want to move the item?
Yeah. So I move that we approve the proposed, the proposal from Municipal Resources, Inc., with the three caveats that I just mentioned, for our deputy chief, local dispatch structure, and Chief Newell's tour request, specifically addressed in the report.
Second.
All those in favor? Those post. Okay. And then, K, since we've held this, we'll just discuss this in executive session. Okay. At this point, I'd like to take a little break here. Yeah.
We'll have a single branch, please. Is it taken now?
Yes, we're back.
Okay. For how long is that, just right now? Come on, okay.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is review of our ARPA allocations, and I'm going to turn this over to Kathy for discussion.
All right, so everyone should have seen the spreadsheet that Carla did that made a very nice attempt to clean this up. It's, it's easier to understand than it was before. Okay, so, we've got a few votes to take tonight, but in summary, we still have a long way to go to get it all spent, but Carla is very diligent about making sure she's talking to every person who's in charge of that specific bucket. She's going to meet with everybody, I think, next week, Mark, and remind people that they have to spend it by June thirtieth, or they're in danger of losing it. So, that message is going to be sent. I do believe, at the end of this, we're going to have some extra money, we're going to have to figure out a way to spend, and it could be a few hundred thousand bucks. The sidewalk bucket, remember, was seven hundred four thousand dollars. We took about a hundred forty-five out for the budget for fiscal year twenty-five when we met. You know, we, we went to that meeting thinking we were going to not fund the potential trail, but we changed our mind, so then we took the one forty-five out of the sidewalk money based on Capital's request. Capital told us that, meeting with Bill, they, he knew he couldn't get sidewalks done, it wasn't going to work. So what they wanted to have left there is money for engineering of sidewalks, not actually building sidewalks, which was about half of the seven oh four. That's not even done either. So there's probably extra money in that bucket. Sam, it looks like National Grid is...
Still...
Okay, all right, but time is running on that one too, for sure.
Got it.
Okay. Jay Montijo has sent us a memo, which everybody should have, that basically says he wants to turn back ninety-four thousand of his allocation for redoing the Wi-Fi system. He's got that all set, ready to go. So not only is he going to get new access points, he's going to get new switches, and he's going to do to this room what has been done at the public safety training room. He's getting all that for a lot less than what we thought, just to do the Wi-Fi piece of it. But he has said, turn back to ninety-four, and he's also got another five thousand left over where he did the Wi-Fi study. So we're going to vote a second to put that into a, a different bucket. Let's see, Shopsi has told us, Dorian, Dorian Jusiski has said she doesn't, they don't need all the eighty-five hundred dollars that we allocated to them to, I believe, to pay Sarah. So, she's told us what we can take back there, so we'll vote to put that back. So in the end, we're going to have some extra money. The, the thinking is that we're going to have a list of capital items that we could use the money for very quickly if we have to. But again, we've got to get this all done by the end of the year. We've got to know what's being spent, we've got to actually sign contracts, we've got to get things ordered.
Sign contracts by the end of this year.
That's right.
And spent later, yeah.
Yeah, so it's got to be committed.
You said spent by the thirtieth, not this year.
Well, that's what she's telling them, okay?
I've got one, Bill sent an email shortly before this meeting began, I don't remember whether you might be on it too, but it's just...
I didn't see it.
It's on sidewalks, I haven't even looked at it yet, but some information from, what's the name of our engineer?
Beta.
No, no, no. R.
VHB.
VHB, VHB, some quotes, VHB. So, I think...
For the engineering piece.
Information for, for the next meeting.
But that's still just the engineering piece, which is what we're supposed to do. Now, remember too, Bill also has to get some money spent on roads. And as far as I know, he hasn't even started putting together a list of roads he wants to work on. So, Al, maybe we continue to try to influence him unduly, but, so, that's going to get it done, that takes a while to get done, you got to list the roads, you got to then get out to bid, so he's got money for that too. So he's got, and he's on vacation, that's why I couldn't talk to him. So we'll talk to him next week as far as his plans go, and make sure he understands his deadlines. Okay, so this is what we need to do tonight. First of all, there's two other, three other uses of the money. So these are the three things that people have asked us to consider tonight. Doug Peck of Council on Aging wants thirty thousand dollars to do a survey of the town that basically will try to determine what seniors want.
Thirty to thirty-five.
So we should do thirty-five then, let's make sure he's got enough, right? Westborough's done this, he's, he's got a model for this, and he, he really thinks it was a productive exercise.
At the last meeting.
Yeah. He's actually spoken to us twice about it now.
Yeah.
So, so that's one use that we're going to vote on. The second use is, based on meeting with Tim tonight, we need to probably set aside money for the, the work that he's going to do. We, I put eighty, we may want to do ninety, given that he may expand it when he talks to Bill to include the Sturgeon's Yard, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to put money aside for that, okay? So we've got more money coming back than what I proposed. Then the third one is, the Scholarship Committee has no money. They've got four hundred and eighty-six dollars, and for right now, to do scholarships, and the applications are coming in. So the ask there is five thousand dollars for the Scholarship Committee.
Where do they normally get money? I thought that...
They used to get it. Well, I tell you what's happened, is people used to pay their tax bills manually, right?
Yeah.
Now, I don't know about you, I pay my electronically, so I don't even look at what's on there, so you don't check the box off anymore. So that's where they used to get it, there's a box on your tax bill to check for this.
That would be good to find an electronic way to...
Yeah, actually, there is, there was something circulated online, I saw this, they're looking for money, and, so there is an electronic way to do it.
Yeah, so, we should try to help advertise that, but it's not going to help right now. They, I mean, these applications are coming in, I think they're going to award them like May ninth, so we need to, to consider that, okay? All right?
Okay.
Okay, all right, so that's the three ask, okay? Okay, so I'm going to do this one at a time.
John Parent.
I'm going to get to John Parent, okay? He, he didn't want to change, okay, so I'll go ahead and do John Parent's, which I brought it up. I'm just trying to go slow, so you, you don't have to, I talk so slow.
I got it.
I'm trying to do one thing at a time, so everybody knows what they're voting on, okay? All right, so let's consider the three new uses first, then we'll talk about John Parent. Okay, so the first request is, is there a motion to allocate five thousand dollars of ARPA from the, we got thirteen K unallocated, from the unallocated bucket to the Scholarship Committee.
So, following along, you're, you're unallocated.
There's thirteen thousand dollars that is...
So the rest of what you're going to do is move the stuff from one repurpose.
Yeah, but they only need five, so you can take it out of thirteen, easy.
They'll move.
Okay, all right.
All right, all those in favor?
Okay, so that's five K for that. Okay, the next one let's do, let's do Doug Peck and thirty-five K. So that, the first thing we need to do to get him money, we need to take money from someplace else, so let's take the money from the Wi-Fi upgrade, and that's ninety...
Have a turn back.
Yeah, Jay wrote the memo, he says, take it, ninety-four thousand dollars. Okay, so the motion is to move ninety-four thousand dollars back to the unallocated bucket from the Wi-Fi upgrade.
For my comment last ti, last time, I think we can do that more effectively locally, frankly. I'm, I'm not a big fan of these kinds of general broad studies. These folks who do this kind of stuff, in my experience, have a template that they use, they grind away and basically tell us more or less what we already know. I think it'd be much more valuable to use the Technology Committee's survey to do something like this, but I understand that...
Well, how about this, why don't we put it in tonight and let him know he's got it? I mean, we spend nothing on seniors, you know, we spend four hundred thousand dollars on seniors. So he really wants to do this, and he has seen it, and he thought it was a very productive exercise for the towns that he has seen do it, especially Westborough. Well, how about that? Why don't we put it in tonight and let him know he's got it? I mean, we spend nothing on seniors. You know, we spend $400,000 on seniors. So he really wants to do this. And he has seen it, and he thought it was a very productive exercise for the towns that he has seen do it, especially Westboro. And then we can talk to, you can then talk to him.
I heard that, yeah.
Okay, and then say, but we would recommend that you actually look at working with MTC to actually do this.
I'm I'm not going to argue.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is to, first of all, the first motion is to move $94,000 out of the Wi-Fi upgrade to unallocated ARPA.
So move.
Okay.
Second, all those in favor?
Okay, now we got money unallocated. Now, the next motion is to move 35,000 of what's in unallocated to a new bucket for the senior survey to be done by the Council on Aging.
Second, all those in favor?
Okay, alright. Al, do you want to wait and do the par one till he comes back and really know whether it's eighty or ninety?
Uh, yeah, I think we should, let's let's have Bill here, because, you know, this may also be a source of remediation money.
Okay, alright, my next two votes is to move money back into unallocated. So Shopsi has said, please take $3,276.50 and take it back for the study that they had $8,500 to do. We'll put, so the motion is to take it back and put it into unallocated.
Second, all those in favor?
The next one is Jay Montijo also did a Wi-Fi survey, and he's got $5,075.21 left over. He said, take it. So the motion is to take the excess money from the Wi-Fi survey of $5,075.21 and put that into unallocated.
Second, all those in favor?
Okay, now let's talk about John Parent's requests. Everybody saw his letter as far as what he wants to do. Okay, so he's already got a bucket. And we put $400,000 in it, and he's coming in way under budget as far as building the extra rooms in your center, which is pretty typical of him. He he usually does that. So what he's asking is for us to leave it there, but expand that bucket description to include the furniture for the room, the repainting or reciting of the senior center, which sorely needed, and then also to add to it the replanning of whatever it's going to be planted around the townhouse that was taken out when we did the window project. And he is, he's giving us a number. He said that all that should cost something like $210,000, which he's got left as far as this bucket goes.
And I've talked to John about this, and my point here is that what we're doing effectively is reallocating our previous ARPA money. And I think that we ought to do that kind of thing in the context of are there other needs out there? I I don't disagree that all these things that John wants to do are important things and useful things, and, you know, certainly valid expenditures out of the ARPA bucket. But if there was something else that was more critical, I think it's an opportunity to rethink that again before we sign off on this.
Well, let me just say this, as far as these two things are senior center. I think those two should fall in that book. I mean, it was a senior center allocation. So whether it's in the furniture, they were supposed to get a grant, and they didn't get it, and that's why they need the money for the furniture. So I, you know, I can maybe separate the townhouse, but I think those fall squarely within that one, just with a little bit of broadening of what we we said.
But I was also going to say that, that said, we now have, I wasn't aware how much money we had coming back in here when I was thinking about that. So I feel about going ahead with this, as John suggests, given that we've got some more cushion now from the other money that we're getting back into the buckets here, unallocated. So.
Yeah, National Grid.
I support this.
Okay, so the motion is to allow John Parent's bucket to be expanded for the senior center to include the furniture for the room, the outside painting slash siding, whichever way he decides to go, and then the replanning around the townhouse.
Second, all those in favor?
We have a hand up in the audience.
For this?
Mr. Fling, I don't know what his question or comment is.
If he's guys hand up.
Yeah, okay, let's.
Good evening.
Hello, Tim?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Yeah, I just had a comment about the ARPA allocation. I think it's kind of related to the sidewalks or related to thereof. I think that some trash cans along sidewalks would be a great option. So I don't know if we've looked into that or not, but I just want to bring that back up again as a suggestion on potential use of the money in sidewalks.
Alright, thanks.
Yep.
Well, that's all of our votes.
That's all of our votes?
That's all of those, right?
Okay.
For now, there's more to come. Because we've got to keep doing this too, we know it's going.
Next item on the agenda is one stop, one stop grant applications. Vanessa, do you want to give us a report on that?
Thank you. So the last time I was here, we talked about a couple of different ideas that we were investigating. Want to really thank Leah Emerson as well for helping, you know, weigh through a lot of this and look into a lot of different components of the grant program. One thing we looked at was the flag school and resubmitting that. That would go under the underutilized properties, we think, in the in that particular program, but because we don't know exactly when the Historical Society is leaving, and we don't know exactly yet who will go in there, it it doesn't seem like the best idea right now for the one-stop program. They're really looking for things where there is a focus on housing and economic development in projects that are advanced in design or shovel-ready. So we kind of put the flag school off, you know, for now.
But nothing keeps us from bringing that back at some future point, right?
Absolutely, correct, yes. And the other point is, you know, this is the expression of interest to gain feedback, that these applications would be due April 30th. Nothing prevents us from submitting any other idea, new or different, for the full application, which would be due the first week of June.
Okay.
So we're kind of shelving flag school for the moment. We would say the same about the culvert repair. We talked to Bill about some of the streets he's looking at, you know, Willow Street in particular or Central Street. But he also has a number of grant applications in other programs. You know, one of them is municipal vulnerability. We think he has a much better chance getting those awarded instead of taking away from, you know, other ideas for one-stop, so.
Does Bill agree with that?
He does. That was his suggestion, yes, yeah. So then we come back to the tricentennial and the idea of place-making and wayfinding in the town center. That's something we've seen other communities have been awarded for in the last couple of rounds of of one-stop. You know, some communities like Amherst and Belmont and Essex. And it's, that would come under the Mass Downtown Initiative Program under Community Activation and Place-Making. So Leah, again, has been a real big help looking at, you know, what's been successful in other communities. And Essex in particular was a program that was very similar, we thought, you know, to Southborough, especially, you know, looking at our our brand-new park and, you know, the appropriate signage as we lead up to the tricentennial. So she in particular has looked at, you know, the place-making would be more about identifying opportunities and challenges in the town center. Things that could be activated through programming, events, public art, you know, design. That is something that, you know, really strung, rung a bell with us in particular.
How about connecting with the Historical Commission? Folks have talked about a history walk, which I think is a good story with that sort of downtown
Right.
development thing. So I would think that that's got to be.
Absolutely.
A good selling point.
You know, if the board, you know, liked proceeding that way, we would talk with the Tricentennial Committee. They're meeting tomorrow night, actually. They haven't really heard about this this piece yet, so we wanted to get some feedback from from you tonight. You know, we we've also submitted for, you know, Route Nine and zoning in the past, and we haven't been successful in those one-stop applications. And again, you know, there's a focus on, you know, advanced design and shovel-ready and, you know, MBTA.
That that sounds like it makes sense to me, and I remember from our time on the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group, this was definitely something that we talked about was pedestrian, you know, like a history walk kind of idea for around the new park. So I think it's a good idea.
Alrighty.
So there's a, there's a slot for downtown initiative projects, is what you're saying? And I'm saying this with a very straight face. I'm actually not joking. I really will include a picture of the Bema Slot, so they understand how much, I'm not joking. How much work we need to do in this cute little town, should be a cute little town to try to make it the way it should be. So it sounds like, given what you said about the first two, then it sounds like this is kind of our.
Are there, are there any other sort of combined opportunities out there in terms of more than just Southborough? Because that was one message I got from listening to folks talk in the past about successful bids, where if you've got three towns working together on something. Yeah, that has more sort of.
Right.
Scope.
You know, we didn't have anything identified right now, Mr. Cyrus, about, you know, for the one-star program, you know, we were able to receive a regional program, a grant rather, you know, through, I think it was through Maya, unless it was Community Compact. It was one of the two with the cameras that Bill kind of, you know.
Or motor system cameras, yeah.
So, you know, Maya is very interested in in that, you know, idea as well. So we'll have another Workplace Safety Meeting coming up shortly with our Maya Loss Control Agent. So I can talk to him then.
Any ideas we can get, those kinds of opportunities seem to me to increase our chances certainly, so.
That's absolutely a focus to the Community Compact.
And those cameras were shared between towns.
Yes, yes.
But clearly, as far as expression metrics, this is, we don't have time. Let me shoot. You're leaving on the 25th, right?
Yes.
And this is 23rd, and you got to get it in by the 30th, right?
Right.
So I think we're done as far as.
Two days. Okay.
The one, the one question I had was, we had some discussion about expanded municipal wastewater, and I don't know whether that made your cut or not.
Not, it actually, unfortunately not. And, you know, Mark and I talked again about that and, you know, didn't have anything in place with a neighboring community and haven't been able to come up with, you know, a concrete proposal to submit at this time for this particular program.
I think we should.
We can.
Lay, I think we should lay the groundwork for future grants.
We need to start, you know, we just, we start this too late. We need to start early. No, no, person in the view. We just get busy with other things, and this gets pushed, and then we make these quick decisions to try to get something in. We've got so much work to do with the development of this town. I mean, you've got a committee that needs help, that's kind of falling apart.
Staff that needs.
Yeah, no, she only works 19 hours. So we we've really got to do something, start focusing on developing businesses in this town, small, good, wanted businesses.
I I agree. I think that's all we can do with the one-stop for for now. But as you said, this is just about the expressions of interest, and then use it June.
June, it's June 5th or 6th is the deadline for the full application.
Okay.
Much more comprehensive.
Okay, alright.
But not too far away.
Exactly.
Can you come quickly? Good morning.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so the the items we've got remaining on the agenda, potential letter to Planning Board regarding 120 Turnpike Road, review draft Planning Board Letter Regarding MBTA Community Compliance, and I don't know how much.
Fall time meeting.
Yeah, fall time meeting. Okay, so Kathy, you want to take the?
So I think that we've all been very consistent, unanimous in our support of. The 40B proposal, 120 Turnpike Road. We also supported 250, but 120 is much further along. So Andrew and I talked about drafting a letter to the Planning Board to basically let them know how we feel about the project, specifically what's hanging up right now, which is the land that was supposed to be donated in 2019 when they did a major site plan review with the previous owner. So I thought I'd just read the letter, and everybody, Sam's given me one change. So see what you think of the letter, and then see if we agree that we all are ready to sign it and send it. Okay, so, Dear Honorable Planning Board, this select board continues to strongly support the proposed 40B project at 120 Turnpike Road. We are aware of the issue recently raised regarding the requirement for the proposed property's site to be donated to the town as part of a 2019 major site plan approval condition granted to the previous owner. We encourage you to work with the project sponsor and waive the donation requirement of that specific property. We believe that the proposed project is very beneficial to the town in several ways, and the project should be supported. The proposed project is small, but will provide badly-needed housing to Southborough, including 15 units of low-market rent housing. The new housing will not have a detrimental impact on any of the areas that we are usually concerned about with large developments, including, and this is where Sam is going to put his editorial here, residential abutter concerns, traffic concerns, and impact on town services, including schools, roads, and public safety. We need to provide more affordable housing in our town, to our town residents, including our senior population. Currently, there are many seniors who live at Madison Place down the road. Madison Place also continues to be fully occupied and have little impact on our school population. There's clearly a demand for more affordable rental units in Southborough. This project would also provide badly-needed revenue to fund town services. Annual town revenue from the project is estimated to be at least $250,000. We do not believe that the property is needed to add to, excuse me, we do not believe that the property is needed to add to our already substantial supply of open land. If that were the case, the land would have been transferred in 2019 when the site plan review was completed. Our overarching issue in Southborough today is to provide housing that allows a diversified population to live and thrive. We believe that this is an opportunity for the Planning Board to show its support for the residents that you serve.
I think it sounds good.
That summarizes my feeling about it, certainly. So, and I realize that there are a lot of groups that are, have different opinions about this, and the Planning Board will certainly do what the Planning Board needs to do with it, but I think we ought to opine on what we feel about it.
Yeah, and I I've also thought about this. I don't think there's, you know, if you don't say what you think, there's leave some ambiguity and just just make it clear, and then it goes from there.
Yep.
Al, did you have a question or? Okay, yeah.
I have a question. Mimi Latrell, Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board obviously doesn't know about this letter. It just showed up on the agenda tonight. I would ask, so this is a condition of an approved site plan, and this goes back to, as Marguerite discussed, the lack of enforcement in town. So you are, your request is that we just waive that condition and move on?
Well, I I think our request is that you give it all due consideration and try to work to achieve, but you know, I don't even think there's even much point in kind of going into it that much, because ultimately, it's going to be your board's decision, right? But I I think that exactly what that letter said, I think that accurately states our board's position, is to think about it from a just a a bigger-picture perspective, where we think we need to go on affordable housing, the, this site versus other sites, and just not getting too lost in some of the other details about it.
So Mimi, we're not saying you don't get something back for this. So it's up to you guys to decide what you think is appropriate, if you believe that this shouldn't be one-sided. So we're not saying don't sit down and negotiate with Mr. Ferris as far as trying to get something back, but we're just really encouraging, you know, we really hope that you would do that so that this project can go forth. You know, you've probably heard me say this. I've been in that building next door for 20 years. You just can't imagine how good the traffic is going in and out of there. It really is so easy, the ingress, ingress and egress. There's a turning lane there. So, you know, the normal problems we have with 40Bs, you just don't have it with this one. So we just think that the good far outweighs the bad on this one. And, you know, if you think where, you know, a lot has to follow place before this takes a place at Park Central. We know what has to happen, right? So there's no use, and and assuming that's going to happen, it's got to happen. But it just seems like this is such a overall good 40B. And I, I know the people who own Madison Place, and that place is full, and it's full of seniors. There's a lot of, there's other families there too, but there's a lot of seniors there that are, I guess they're selling their house in in Southborough, and they're moving there because they want to downsize. So again, trying to keep seniors in town, this is another, you know, 60 units that they've got a place to move to if they need to sell their bigger house. So we just, we're just asking that you, you know, consider this and look at and see if you don't think that the the pros don't outweigh the cons in this. But we're not saying don't get anything back from it. That's really, you know, your your job to sit down with Mr. Ferris and see what what he, what you guys can come up with.
Okay, okay. And also, just to correct something, we raised this issue when we sent our letter to the state prior to the application being filed, and it was just paid attention to recently, although we kept asking.
So I I didn't know that. I just thought truly we we realized it recently. So we certainly didn't know about it until the last few months.
It's in our letter.
I believe.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks. Then Paul, do you have a question?
I understand now what the purpose of the letter is. I think that the selectmen should allow the responsible boards, particularly the Planning Board, the ZBA and the CONCON, be allowed to do their job on behalf of the town, and the selectmen should wait to state their position on this project. The selectmen already prematurely stated support for this project before any of the comments of the other boards have been addressed. Okay? In light of the premature letter, okay, I think, and I'm concerned. Okay, in light of the premature letter, okay, I think, and I'm concerned about that the additional letter needs to address the planning board and stewardship letter. It hasn't been addressed yet. Okay. I think that there's a peer review hasn't been done yet. The applicant uh said they were gonna do a peer review. They needed the additional time for the peer review. They haven't done it. I, I don't have any indication that they're gonna follow through with that. They have not submitted a preliminary subdivision as required by the comprehensive permit process and that they had uh agreed to do. The status of the property ownership is very much in question. Their offer of twenty five thousand and to provide the screening that was in the original plan, that they've make now taken out the current plan is woefully inadequate. If you take that six acres, one, one acre per lot at three hundred thousand dollars per lot in Southborough, that's one point eight million dollars. That prop, that property at a minimum is worth one point eight million dollars. Not twenty five thousand, but with something piddly. The sidewalk that was raised that needs to be provided for this property, um, because there's sidewalk on Route nine and everybody is about um multimodal and providing access, hasn't been shown on the plan. The back line of the sidewalk isn't shown, the labels aren't shown. There is too much up in the air about this. And the other boards which have to do their job in representing the town of Southborough should be able to um come to whatever is this, this property is. They want four stories. There are no other four story buildings in the town of Southborough. It would set a poor precedent to approve a four story building. There's too much up in the air. It is premature for the selectmen pur, pur, purporting to represent the town to support this project.
Alright, thank you.
It's a bad project. I understand we need uh, we need housing. We need to work through the MBTA um housing um in a, in a responsible way. And that's the right vehicle. This project is in the wrong place.
Alright, thanks Paul. Okay, um. Very, very brief.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie. I'm speaking as um the Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, which has taken a position to not support the forty B there. And we're urging the planning board to um stay with the existing requirements of the six point two acres going back to the going to the town. And I'm gonna, didn't discuss this with the committee because I didn't know about this letter, so I'm speaking as a citizen right now. But it is disappointing to me, and I know you have the best interest of the town, in affordable housing and open space. We hate them being at odds, but it is disappointing that you never spoke with either the Open Space Commission nor the stewardship committee that has oversight of that property to ask what our real concerns are. You made an opinion based on housing alone without evaluating the other issues that are really big on that property. And to think it doesn't have any um negative impact, you're mistaken. And our letters will show that. But um, I, I really think that you should have really at least asked our input. So that's a disappointment. And I would disagree that the land was undeveloped. We thought it was undevelopable because of the two building law of the existing um variance and um special permit. Nobody was that concerned about it. And yes, the town has a, a big problem with not following through on permits and making sure things are done. But that's no reason to not take the land that's required to be given to the town. And as um someone just said, the value of that, um, you know, this is low lying. When you talk, there's not enough money to spend on open space at the Johnson land. Here we have an opportunity. This is land that's supposed to be the town's and it should come to the town. But at least have the conversation with the Open Space Commission and the stewardship committee and hear what their concerns are and why this is not a good deal for the town. It's not just traffic. Thank you.
I move that we approve the letter that Kathy has.
Mr. Chairman, uh, um, Ms. Gillespie, I, I, I take issue with that. I want to point out that neither the um stewardship committee nor the Open Space Commission, which opposed this, uh, our, our position, uh, brought it to us. This board is elected. This board is responsible for the performance of all of the committees that it appoints. It is responsible to the voters for the performance of those committees. So this board has been clear in its support for this project. And so for committees that we appoint to oppose this project ought to, at a bare minimum, have the courtesy to come before this board and bring their concerns before they go and issue letters to the public about opposition to policy, a policy initiative that is supported by this elected board which appoints those committees. So uh, I'm sorry, I think the shoe is on the other foot.
Alright, and we're just gonna vote on this, okay? I move that the board approve the uh, uh, la, letter that Kathy has uh described to us.
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, um, yeah, okay, thanks. Um, so the next item is the draft letter that we're being asked to sign by the planning board regarding the MBTA Communities Act. Uh, and it's been prepared, right, Mimi, by um Liz Lyden? Got her input?
Over the mic.
Sorry.
It was um, Mimi Latrell, Chair of the Planning Board. It was written by uh Marty Houlihan and I and Karina. And then we sent it to Elizabeth Lyden and she reviewed it and commented.
Okay. I don't really have any um comments on it. I mean, I think there's no harm in, if there was act, if the um state did what we're asking to do, it would only be good for the town. It would only be good for all of us. So I, I don't have any problem with it. I could wordsmith it a little bit or something.
I can't resist wordsmith.
Okay.
Well, but it's there, well, okay, Andrea signed it too, but I thought, I thought it was.
First signature is the select.
It is, but I thought it was well written. Um, and I, there's no downside to this. Uh, whether somebody's going to listen, you know, who knows, but um, it's certainly worth a shot.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree, but I think there's a couple of things we could, could do to make it more likely to do something.
Okay.
Uh, two, two things. One, I had one word concern. Uh, you talked about this being catastrophic.
Yeah, that was, that was.
I would use the word egregious error on the part of the consultant. Catastrophic, I think, means something entirely different.
It's not a catastrophe.
Yeah, so egregious error. Yeah, I'll send it to you. And the other thing that I think would be very helpful is um, anything like this, I think is far more likely to be successful if the ask is very clear. And I think the ask in the last paragraph is somewhat garbled in the sense that I would think, and I'll send you a suggestion for that too as well, but I think breaking out that last paragraph, say, in summary, we're asking for the following, colon, one is the um, more time to, to do it. Second is to go back to uh, uh, determine that our original plan was the, except, is an acceptable plan. And I think those, at least my read, those are the two key points that we're asking for here. And I think closing with that in a very clear statement makes it much easier for the reader to say, aha, here's what they want. Can we do this or not?
Well, we talked to put in the first paragraph too, so they know what you're asking for.
But, but it basically, I think, is clear enough in the front of it, but it wouldn't hurt to get it in the front.
And so you're, in what you just said, are you, is one of the primary asks just relief from the requirement about, I don't know if we can get it, but.
About the half mile radius.
Yes, that's, that's the, that's the most important.
Yeah, yeah. And, and then more time for us to sort through on a little.
It's also the most consistent with the statement in the letter. We are committed to achieving.
Yep.
Compliance with this and you know, the spirit of the law, right?
Yep.
Um, I think more time, I think, I don't think that more time works to our, you know, an unlimited amount of time works to our advantage. I think that, you know, we did previously write a letter very similar to this about eighteen months ago. And this was when towns were just commenting on draft rules, I think. And it did, not like our letter was responsible for it, but that relaxed some of the requirements.
Yeah, I, I agree, Andrew, that the more, more problematic one, I guess, question for Ms. Latrell. I mean, if they come back and say, um, okay, um, your previous plan will be deemed compliant. Um, I think we would probably have enough time to get that through the town meeting process if they did that in like ninety days or something like that, right?
But wait a minute, Mimi, I thought you and Andrew Faff had sat down and had come up with a alternative that seems to work. That's, and that you, I may be putting, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I thought that he said you got, you had agreed and that's what you were going to um take back to the planning board and, and, and I guess, are you gonna go back to the, the consulting firm? Um, and that's what you were going to propose. So are you doing this in parallel and still gonna try to come up with a solution? Um, in case they don't answer you in time?
Um, yes, so we are operating on two tracks. One is to ask for relief from the state, two is to try and gain compliance. So if we don't get A, then we'll have something to do with B.
That's why you asked the extended time while we're here. So, but I, I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't couch it to say that we want you to declare that our original plan is compliant. And then, oh, by the way, if you decide not to do that, uh, and we gotta do another plan, we want an additional twelve months or whatever to be able to do that. That to me is not as strong a statement.
What about, what about if we delegate you to work with? It sounds like the letter doesn't need to go right now, but it should go sooner rather than later.
Yeah, well, so we'll discuss it on Monday. So if you want to come on, are you available on Monday, Sam?
Um, at least virtually, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, and uh, and again, I guess my theory is that I don't think we want to get, make it too complicated. So it seemed to me asking for both at the same time was, would give us cover if we had to go a different route. And if we, if they agree to the first part of the ask, then the twelve months you don't need necessarily, but it would be good to have the capacity there. So that was sort of my thought of covering our bases. But I, I'll, I'll think about some language maybe and send it to you.
Okay.
Ahead of time, so that you can.
Well, not.
And then I'm fine with whatever they come up with saying that.
Yeah.
You don't need to come back to us.
Again, apart from that, I think that it's, it's uh, you know, well done and uh, uh, certainly worth the effort. And all I can say is no, but uh, they're on the hook here. It's their consultant. I, you could, you could.
Yeah.
I thought that was pretty pointed.
Maybe highlight that piece.
He was egregious and highlighted apples go on. Okay, okay, I'll follow up. Thank you.
So no vote on this right now. We'll just, you'll work on it and then we'll see the, another version of this probably by our next meeting.
Well, so we hope to um sign off on it on Monday. So we were going to take feedback from the select board.
Um, could we vote contingent on, you know, modifications along this line?
I'm fine with Sam, work with planning board and come up with what we all agree on and, and.
Is that alright?
Right.
Yeah, okay, so I'm, I move that the board appoint Mr. Stivers to uh, work with the planning board on the, the language that we've discussed and present a final draft and then I'll sign it.
But Mimi, it really was a well-written letter, um, as, as is.
Yeah.
We're just, we're tinkering now.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I think the only item left then is um.
Fall town meeting.
Fall town meeting. I'm gonna suggest we just maybe just table this.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I think there's, I think there's a path on this one. Um, given what we heard previously, uh, it seems to me that there are two issues. One is, is it Saturday or weeknight? Those are the dates. Um, and then depending on what happens there, there's uh, different concerns about, you know, things like daycare and so forth. Seems to me that we have a structure in place that we could actually get good data on the first question. Technology Committee has a survey mechanism that they use successfully in several events now. Last time they got like four hundred and fifty plus responses on it. I would be very interested in asking them to do a very simple survey, publicize it. I would bet that in a matter of a few weeks here, we can get answer back that is quotes data-driven. It says, here's what people want. And then given that one, I think that would be interesting to uh, put together a little head, a hot committee with uh, including the two folks that we heard from last time to say, okay, what do you do? And reinforcing that it's not the select board's call, it's the moderator and the town clerk who actually run town meeting. But we could appoint a small, short-term committee to say, come up with a proposal.
Well, I do think we, we picked a date. And I, 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 I like this idea of you, um, the MTC survey. Um, another piece of information, I talked to Jim Egery about it. I don't think we have it yet, but it's just of information about number of people voting at Saturday town meetings versus the weekday meetings. That's also.
Has he gotten it yet? He said he was, he requested it.
Well, we already have so many balls up in the air. I don't, I don't think we got it, but.
But, but again.
Yep, well, we just, Sam wanted, just let Sam finish.
But, so get data from Jim as well as from MTC survey. I think that can send us in a direction that is more than so, we've heard a little bit from here, a little bit from there kind of thing. And uh, then with that information and a firm date, then you've got the uh, the ancillary issues of, you know, daycare and, and secondary room kids, families, et cetera, et cetera, that folks can work with the town clerk and the moderator to figure out what makes sense because we don't make those calls.
Yep.
So, so I guess.
Oh, I'm assuming that we have sometime, I think it's forty-five days that we have to have before town meeting to actually schedule one.
Yeah, we still got plenty of time.
Planning board needs to know when this um is because they've got, they've got to know what we're shooting for. So there's, I think.
I'm not suggesting we wait until forty-five days.
We can do it quickly. In fact, I talked to my folks and he said we can do that quickly.
Okay.
So the, the steps are for, I guess, you to reach out to Matt if we vote to do this and make the request that they do that quickly and then have.
Okay, so I move that we request that the MTC do a very simple survey. Um, I really just think it's a one question.
Yeah.
What night?
Weeknights or.
For a, for a fall town meeting in September, late September.
Yep.
What is your preference? A weekday night beginning at approximately six P M?
Mm-hmm.
Or a Saturday?
Ten A M.
Beginning at ten A M.
By weekday, do you mean Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday.
So then, then you fall over on Tuesday. Then this one may go two nights. There's a lot.
Yeah.
I would say that rather than.
Yeah, I would too.
Monday and likely Tuesday.
Yeah, and we used to start them at seven, not six. They start at seven, went to eleven, and then you go to the next night.
Yeah, I think seven is a more reasonable number.
They gotta, people gotta get home and eat and um.
Monday night at seven.
And possibly Tuesday night, continue to.
To end, no later than eleven and then they, they carry for, the overflow night would be Tuesday, same thing.
Pick one.
Yep. Okay.
So you moved, I seconded.
All those in favor? Good, okay. Um, alright, the last item on the agenda is public comment.
Is the guy that.
Yes.
Alright, here he's got his hand up again. Okay.
Okay, we'll first recognize this person that wanted to speak.
Been here all night.
Yeah, yeah. And if you can state your name and address, please?
Uh, hello, my name is Mayor Rosenbaum. I live on seventy-first one O one street. And I just have um, a small excerpt from a news article that I would like to read.
Is that in, is that in Southborough?
You're a Southborough resident?
Yeah, I'm just outside of the city, but I'm working the city and I do all of my stuff inside of the city.
You're not, you're not a Southborough resident though?
Yeah.
You're not allowing people from like fifteen minutes outside of the city to come speak, even though I shop, I work here, I eat here and I spend my money here.
Are you talking about Southborough, Massachusetts?
Yes, I am. Southborough, Massachusetts.
Okay.
So I came across a news article today that stated in a unanimous decision on March seventh, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court ruled that a public comment policy or civility restraint used by the town of Southborough violates the free speech rights codified in the Massachusetts Constitution. And I can quote this article and it says, although civility can and should be encouraged in political discourse.
So you know, one of our, we keep a comment to about, so three minutes, so.
Yeah, no problem. I'm not gonna read the whole article. I just wanted to read some key parts, just so the members of the public are aware. Because this article, it was very difficult for me to find. So I'll repeat that last quote from the Supreme Court. And it states, I quote, although the civility can and should be encouraged in political discourse, the court wrote, it cannot be required. This course originated from a lawsuit filed against the town of Southborough in two thousand twenty by a resident who claimed the select board unconstitutionally silenced her at a two thousand eighteen public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
I will be cleaner. Mimi Latrell, nineteen org. I will be cleaner. Mimi Latrell, nineteen Oregon Road, I'm speaking as a resident. I just wanted to clear up some misinformation that's been bandied around regarding the Community Preservation Act. The state has not reduced funding to that. That is funded through real estate transfers, real estate transfer fees. And when there are more, there's more money. When there's less, there's less. When we first adopted, there were only a few towns that, so we got a bigger piece of the pot. Now there were a lot of towns and many cities, so it's divided amongst more. So the state has not reduced funding, it's just more people are pulling from the same pot.
And it's about, I mean, you're right, it's gone up and down. But the other thing too, the reason that three percent is enticing to advisory when I was on it is because not only do you get three times the match, you get a bonus on top of that. So, you know, it's twenty, Freddie helped me, I think it's twenty-two percent last year is what we got, twenty-two, twenty-three percent. But, you know, when you get the bonus, it goes up um to to well into the thirties. So that's what the incentive was to go from one to three is that you get not only three times, but you get the bonus. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I think that concludes our public comment session. So now I, we're going to make a motion to enter executive session and um we may return to open session, but if we do so, we're not going to have our um Southborough Access Media people wait for the whole time. So if we return to open session, any votes that will be taken will be reflected in in the minutes. All right.
I second that.
Okay, um I move that the board enter into executive session per Mass General Lodge Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one and potentially returning to open session to discuss contract negotiations for the town administrator and fire chief exemption too. As the chair has determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's position.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Dennington, I.
Okay.
Stivers, I.
All right.